I'd like to call to order Monday, June 15, 2015. What you can say, school board meeting? Adam Clark?
Will the board members who are present please respond? Mr. Stern, Ms. Gray, Mr. Born, Mrs. Taylor, Mrs. Harris, Ms. Hahn, Dr. Jones, Mrs. Pinky Epps, Mrs. Larson, Mr. Coleman?
You.
You have the phone, Mr. Chair. Is there anyone here that needs to interpret in Spanish?
Si alguien necesita interpretar en español, por favor levanta la mano.
The next item on the agenda is 1.04, your pledge of allegiance followed by a moment of silence.
That's Mr. Stern with his pledge.
The next item is 1.04, adoption of agenda. And I do have some changes. Under item five, the active improvement items, we are deleting 5.04. And that is to receive an update on finances intended, the National School Boards Association. And under item seven, board actions, we are deleting 7.01, which is to receive for action the student code of ethics and responsibilities. And we're adding 7.06, receive for action position changes in the Transportation Department and approval to pay the exceptional education bus drivers an additional 30 cents per hour only for their time driving exceptional education students. And 7.07, to add, receive for action a request to authorize the superintendent to transfer funds as needed to close the fiscal year successfully within budget. Those are the only changes I want, Mr. Chair.
Sure. Move to the second.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Born?
On the 5.04 update of the National School Boards Association, I know there's been postponed several times. Do we have any idea when we might actually receive that summary or report?
I'll reach out to our colleague on that.
Thank you.
The motion to adopt the agenda was made by Mr. Stern. Can I say that, Mr. Stern? All in favor? All in favor of adopting the agenda? Any opposed? The agenda is adopted as a nominee. The next item is item two, to convene your public hearing and to receive public comment on the renaming Thompson Middle Schools. And let the record be flipped with the withdrawal by Miss Pinky Epps and Miss Taylor. And Miss Gray, I'm sorry, Miss.
Okay, at this time, our agenda has us having convening a public hearing for the renaming of Thompson Middle School. This is our second, second public hearing on that. And we've had some good responses as far as names that have been re-pended. At this time, is there anyone here for that public hearing? If you would line up to my right. Okay, again, is there anyone else here for the public hearing regarding the renaming of Thompson Middle School? Okay, at this point, individuals will have three minutes representing a group. Would you please interest in five minutes?
My name is Judy Stilwell, and I am an entire Richmond Public Schools teacher. I taught at Thompson for 34 years. Over the last few days, I have been contacted by former students, young people who are in their 30s and 40s, who asked me to join them in an effort to name the Thompson Middle School or the Thompson Elkhart School to be named in honor of James Calvin Vaughn, a man who taught at Thompson during those years, for 10 years. During those years, he taught English and drama and the performing arts from 1979 to 1989, when his life was tragically cut short by a brain tumor. I feel, I am very honored to give them my support and to express to you some of their interests. Other people in the previous hearing have recommended African-American role models, such as Benjamin Banneker and George Washington Carver. We don't need to go any farther than next door to find an excellent African-American role model. James was an inspiration and a role model for these young students at a very important time in their lives. I remember him as a passionate educator who wanted to show his students the power of the written word, its power to inform and to entertain and to communicate ideas and emotions clearly and effectively. He wanted to improve their career opportunities and their self-esteem. He did that, and he did much more. He inspired his students to be the best that they could be, and he greatly influenced their lives. That can be seen by the fact that these very busy young people from as far away as California and Massachusetts have come together to honor their teacher. These are successful young men and women. Here are just a few of their professions. Several public school teachers, including some here in Richmond, a college professor, a newspaper editor, a psychologist, the director of a Latin American Arts Center, a science fiction author, a real estate developer, a department of defense analyst, and a public relations internet consultant, an environmental consultant, and a financial consultant. All of them say they were encouraged and inspired by Mr. Vaughn. And 26 years after his death, they still think of him often. Over the next couple of weeks, you will receive petitions and letters from those students asking you to honor a Richmond African-American role model, James Calvin Vaughn, and I urge you to do the same. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much.
Please be reminded that during public hearings and public information areas, roll applause. Thank you.
Good evening, school board members. My name is Sean Connerd. I'm a current social studies teacher at Thompson Middle School. Just finished the first year earlier this Friday, thank God. I come to you with the voices of my students. As my colleague Nathan Johnson spoke to you at the last public hearing about our students' ideas for the schools, we all, we shared some of those students. And they also had ideas to share with me in a previous, previous activity we did together. And by far, the most popular winner out of my children was South or Southside Middle School. When we talk about Elkhart-Thompson or Thompson-Elkhart, merging name, that name of Elkhart and Thompson coming together seems to give them some trepidation that they, it comes with baggage to them. It comes with maybe a sense of, oh, well, you're an Elkhart kid, or you're a, you'll be, oh, you're an Elkhart teacher, so I don't have to listen to you, that type of thing. And I talked, I discussed this with our lead turnaround partner from Cambridge, and he, he put it in a way that said, that leaves a taste in the mouth. So I would discourage the board from doing that. I can tell you, other winners, other votes were given to Huberton Middle School, Forest Hill Middle School, and one for Abraham Lincoln Middle School as well. I have the pleasure and opportunity, and my students had the opportunity, to discuss these ideas with Ms. Larson on Friday as well. She was invited to come to the class and graciously accepted. And she got to discuss with my students, who were surprisingly well behaved for the last day of school, for 20 minutes, 15 to 20 minutes, about what their ideas were and what their passions were and how they felt the middle school should be named. So that's all the time I, I have. So South or Southside, or even South Richmond or South of the James, seems to be a popular idea. And then, just with the last couple of seconds I have, I would like to ask when the board will be voting on this issue specifically. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You can see Assistant Clerk there. I'm sorry, the first speaker also, just be sure that you see the clerk. And it's the 13th, we'll be voting on July 13th. But just make sure she heard your suggestions, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to the renaming of Thompson? Okay. At this point, we will now adjourn the public hearing and take a two-minute recess before we reconvene the board. Thank you.
If there's someone here from our IT department, can you come down and help us with connectivity? Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. I'd like to reconvene school board meeting for Monday, June 15, 2015. Adam Clark?
The next item on the agenda is item four, public information. And I do have one person who signed up in advance. Would it be your pleasure, Mr. Chair?
Okay. Would you call that individual who signed up in advance?
Okay. Kent Duffy? Members of the-
I'm sorry, give me your time. You're representing the individual?
I'm an individual.
Individual, okay. You'll have three minutes.
Members of the school board and Dr. Benton, my name is Kent Duffy, and I am the proud parents of two Richmond Public Schools students. I'm here to voice my concerns about the effects the leveling process is having on the elective programs at Albert Hill Middle School as well as other schools in the Richmond Public School system for the 2015-2016 school year. On June 2nd, it came to my attention that the performing arts programs at Hill, choir, band, orchestra, and drama were most likely going to be eliminated. It was explained to me that these cuts were the result of what RPS administrators refer to as leveling, a method of using enrollment numbers and average class size to determine school staffing. Over the past two weeks, more information has come to light about the impact these factors are having on various disciplines, that being the possible elimination of various art programs, some world language offerings, as well as some core teacher positions in the school system. Before June 2nd, there had been no communication between the school system and families about the potential widespread impact of this process. According to Richmond Times-Dispatch online article today, open high school teachers only found out about some of these cuts on Friday, June 12th, the last day of classes. The timing of this information, as well as the lack of communication, has unfortunately created a strong sense of uncertainty among RPS families. According to the leveling and staffing memo I received, the first goal of leveling is to eliminate courses that had low student selection during registration. Fiscally, this argument makes sense. Except when you apply it to a school system with students who may have had limited exposure to the exact courses with lower enrollments, such as music, theater, visual arts, foreign cultures, and languages. If students don't know what it would look like, they don't know how to ask for it. These students need guidance, education, and encouragement to broaden their horizons and take risks in a safe environment. The second goal of leveling was to create a system with equity. By limiting these electives in some schools, but not in others based on their enrollment, we have done just the opposite of that. Hill will have no performing arts, but Brown will have theater. Open will only have a part-time art teacher, while Hill will have a full-time art teacher. Therefore, if students want or need to remain involved in these activities that are no longer offered at their schools, they are going to have to pay to play. There will be a small number of families that can afford to send their children to Spark classes, private music and art classes. But I venture to guess that a great majority in our city cannot afford those additional expenses.
So is that-
These families depend on our schools to provide a well-rounded, opportunity-rich education for their children. I am asking this school board and the school superintendent to work with us, the concerned parents of RPS students, to come up with a solution to continue to offer the arts, world languages, and other valuable electives that have become endangered in our schools. It's the right decision to keep RPS moving forward and growing into the school system we all believe it can be. Thank you.
At this point, we as a board are always open to allowing the public to speak to us. We try our best to do that consistently. The clerk stated earlier, no clapping during public information period. It's obvious tonight, as we have come to these junctures before, that there are a lot of people who are passionate about speaking to us tonight. But we do have protocols that help us all hopefully stay in a frame of mind where we can hear one another. So I'm just asking that we will try to follow these protocols. A person appearing before the school board will not be allowed to engage in personal attacks of any individual, campaign of public office, use profanity or vulgar language. If there was anyone else who would like to address the board tonight, would you line up to my right?
Mr. Chair, while you're lining up, let the record be flipped with the withdrawal by Dr. Jones.
Due to the high volatility of this issue and some aspects where we would like to make some clarity, I've asked the superintendent to make a brief statement.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and board members. First, let me start off by saying to everyone in attendance that I do believe that we all agree that arts are important. I too believe arts are important, both from a professional and personal standpoint. Because I have a son who's a saxophone player, who plays the piano, plays the guitar. My mother-in-law's a music teacher. My wife plays violin and piano. Additionally, I have an elementary school student currently in the system, so I'm sure of you that anything that happens within the district impacts my home and my family personally beyond the professional aspect of it. What we are challenged with is what we really call needs-based staffing due to limited resources. And specifically, that I think this board and I, I think, have tried to push for more resources for the arts. Example, in our request, the board allocated a position to work on creating a systemic approach to fine arts within the district. The administration's request, the board allocated an additional allotment, consistent lineup, to provide musical supply and instrument resources to the district in a tune of $160,000 annually to the process. We also requested, but was not able to sustain, a staffing allocation to start working on re-establishing world languages within the school district. The challenge becomes that we ultimately have only so many teaching positions available. And we do have an unlevelled situation to provide those resources across the board. First and foremost, the one misrepresentation that has been shared, both through social media and through the media, is that teachers were losing their jobs. I will say to you here today and to anyone, there is no teacher losing a job due to this process. That is not the case. In many cases, it was stated that we are cutting, as opposed to what really is, is reallocation. For example, at Open, we had 33 students who signed up for art in various classifications and sections. All 33 of those students are getting the classes they requested. But instead of it being spread over five sessions, it's being consolidated to three sessions. it's being consolidated to three sessions to still offer them their course selection. For example, at Albert Hill Middle School, the comment was that we are losing performing arts. In all actuality, one of the things that happened is more students signed up for dance than they did drama. So the allocation was redirected based on student demand and request to get dance in place, which means we actually have to go out and recruit and hire a dance teacher, should that be the case. The concerns were made and we were invited to come out to Albert Hill Middle School at their invitation, not initiated by Central Office. And like the person who just spoke indicated, it is our interest to talk through and find ways to find solutions to this challenge still within the resources that I have at my disposal. And we will do that. So we had planned to come and talk through the issue at Albert Hill Middle School to see if we can find a win-win to this challenge that we have. The same was done in the conversation with the new principal transitioning to Open High School on Friday. What many of you may not know is that I was actually the principal of School Law and Law of the District of Columbia that was started in 1971. It is almost exactly like Open High School. So I absolutely have a direct, specific understanding regarding the uniqueness of the Open High School program. And I encourage any of you to look at what School Law and Law looks like. So my conversation with the principal on Friday after we finished the process was this. Please feel free to bring me a proposal about any programmatic challenges that may exist for me to consider and factor into the process as we move about finalizing this situation. But we all have to start with equitable opportunity for all students. Whether you're Northside, Southside, East or West, my goal is to make sure that we have equitable opportunity for all students as best we can. But also, most importantly, that we respond to students' requests for classes and let them be a part of the process. You will shortly receive the release of a student engagement survey that we recently did. And one of the most alarming responses was that students did not feel engaged in the course selection process or a part of controlling any part of their own education within our school district. Given that we have such a high demand on accountability with required courses, one of the few places we have opportunity to allow students to choose is in their elective office. Where we have to improve, and this review itself at Albert Hill Middle School, for example, while they sent the forms home and asked for parents to engage in a process, something did not go well in that process. They have all the student registration forms, but some cases, many cases, parents sign them and others, parents may not have. So that's the conversation of improving the process. One of the challenges that we also have is that we have open enrollment. We have open enrollment, it keeps pushing back in your scheduling process until that is closed. So when you talk about the short notice, schools were giving their final numbers on June 1st. We also had to back up finalizing school schedules because of an extension of opportunity for Benford Program. If you remember, Benford did not close out the response until late mid-May for that process to close out, so they were still registering students. So we could not give teachers final numbers. Then on top of that, the request was made from administrators, which I really agree with. Can we have more time? Because we want to make sure we get this as close to right as possible because of the impact on teachers. So we extended the deadline for completing schedule registration for them to make sure they had as much clean data as possible because of the impact this would have on staffing. So that contributed to some of the late notifications with regards to teachers. With that late notification was a clear mandate that through this process, we would not cause any teacher to lose their job. And they will not, and I guarantee you that, no one will lose their job through this process. In fact, where we have holes that don't match up, the board received in late May a document that outlined our ability to actually give a transition year should they so approve for any teacher who may be displaced through this process, so that we would avoid such a catastrophic event for our staff. What I would say is that there's been a lot of misinformation shared. I applaud our students. I've always gone to Open at their request to talk to them. The one thing that was missing here was, except for one young lady who we're going to be meeting with, who actually reached out and said, "Can you come explain what happened in the process before I respond?" And assuming what is happening is accurate. And I applaud her for that. I thank all the people and all the emails I got on the weekend. It was a very long weekend. For their reaching out, many of you received a standard reply to try to explain it because I could not actually write to everyone individually like I would want to and keep up with it. But I thought it was important that each of you all received some type of response to understand what was going on. So my comment to you is this. Anything we do, we can solve by working together. Some things we'll be able to fix, others will have to agree or disagree and figure out what's the solution in the transition. But more than anything else, I don't think you'll find a bigger advocate for arts and language acquisition. And I've said that from the first day I walked into this district. And I will say that until the last day I walk out of this district. For us to have a well-rounded student, we absolutely want to. If I have my way, I have every student that walks away from my district who is bilingual and a student who has an opportunity at minimum to be exposed to an opportunity to experience performing arts. The challenge we have is we only have so many resources and we have to work within the budget allocation we have. We don't have a reserve fund. We're minus car rental funds that we've had in the past that don't exist anymore that can plug those holes for us. I would encourage you to then, when we receive this challenge again next year in the budget time, please come out and be as actively engaged in that process with us. Because at the end of the day, that is what's going to make sure that we get the resources that we surely deserve. We spend in this country about $28,000 on average to incarcerate someone, but only $13,000 to educate. There is money there without raising taxes. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Benton. Due to the number of people that we have in line, we only have two minutes per individual. Two minutes. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Many of you know who I am. And for those who do not, I am Shonda Harris Mohammed, school board representative for the sixth district. And I am also founder and CEO of Northside Coalition for Children, who I will be speaking on behalf for this evening, as well as I am a daughter, I mean, I'm a mother of a daughter who attends Open High School. Before I begin, I want to remind the young people of what the chairman said. I do not want you to be put out of the auditorium. So instead of clapping, you can put your fingers in the air if you want to clap for those who speak, your teachers or whomever. So I do want you to abide by what the policy that Mr. Coleman read. Before I begin, I am going to read policy 1-1.5. The school board recognizes that discussion of personnel matters is to remain confidential, must be discussed through appropriate channel processes, and that it is the obligation of each school board member and the entire school board to protect the privacy of the individual. School board members should offer criticism of school employees only in private meetings with the appropriate individuals or in executive session. Because I have a high level of respect for myself, I'm going to abide by that. I am so grateful and extremely honored that each of you sitting where you are helped me grow as a school board member. I am so grateful and owe it to all of you that you forced me to grow in policy development, policy understanding, and policy implementation as a board member. I am effective as a board member because of each of your contributions to my growth, good, bad, or indifferent. It is because of each of you I am as strong as I am in my role as a public servant. And you are the reason why the community so listens to me when things do not seem quite clear.
Thirty seconds.
I did say that I was speaking on behalf of Northside Coalition for Children, which is a nonprofit organization. Thank you. It is with great disappointment that I stand before you as a parent and also advocate for Northside Coalition for Children, expressing my sincere concern about the processes implemented by our administration to discuss budget cuts in the areas of teaching and learning. It has been no secret to anyone in this district that I will express my concern when it is needed and supported or when I am not supporting an issue. However, I am always aware of how I treat people and the level of compassion that is exhibited to our employees and to those who I serve with. The most recent events, hearsay or not, over the past two weeks have troubled my spirit deeply. And it is no secret, you can forehand the emails, from accusations and to making teachers aware on the last day of a school year that may not or may have a job and/or will go part-time is just outright and considerate and troubling to describe my feelings as a parent and a advocate of Northside Coalition for Children and a board member. We cannot continue to make decisions in isolation of the people they impact and the people that we serve. We can no longer think that our titles, our roles, and assumption of power allow us to do whatever we want, to whomever we want, and however we want. This is a major concern in our school district. The way we treat people is a direct direction and reaction to how hard they work with our children and families or not. To explain to teachers on the last day of school as an 18-year educator that it would be some adjustments in their employment to me is just disrespectful. And it describes that this board and administration does not respect them and do not have a level of compassion for those who are closest to the children, our teachers. Open High School was created on the idea of specialty and strong rigor and relevance for our stronger academic students in Richmond City Public Schools. It is a learning environment very much like Richmond Community High School that allows strong diversity and strong relationships in the school community. Open High School is an American alternative public high school. An American alternative public high school. It was established in 1972 with the intention of helping students become independent, self-determined thinkers and learners. To remove what the school needs to flourish is to remove the entire foundation the school was founded and created upon. It is no secret to anyone in this room. As an 18-year educator, we have to do better with communicating with our staff. I have never said that I was against leveling across the district as a board member. But I am always going to advocate for effective communication. You cannot go into a school on the last day of school when teachers are trying to check out for the summer and tell them that there would be an adjustment to their employment. It doesn't matter if they're guaranteed a job. It is the how we do things. It is the how we do things. It is the how we do things. And we need to do better with the how. Regardless of what you think of me, regardless of what you say about me, I'm always going to stand on the side of righteousness. And let me remind you that no weapon formed against me will prosper. I stand on the side of right. And I'm going to speak. I stand on their shoulders. They are my colleagues. I love them. I care about them. And then I did as a parent. I was not informed that these changes would happen at Open High. As a parent, I was not given the decency of that. So I respect the role of the superintendent. I respect the role of the chair. I respect all of you. But I'm not...
Thank you very much.
...going to stand and have effective communication in this district. I will speak to it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, board members and Dr. Benton. Thank you for your service and your very difficult job of trying to make very tough fiscal decisions. And while I applaud your efforts with that, I too am here to speak about the leveling issue. I went to Open High in the 1980s. My siblings went in the 1970s, as did Secretary Holton. My two daughters also went to Open High. And I think it's easy to think of a solution like that as a great fiscal decision. But leveling across the board is not a one-size-fits-all decision. And Open High is a very small school. And so when you make, as you said, restructuring decisions where you only have a small number of teachers and you're looking at positions being cut and shifted around, some decisions just aren't sustainable. And you cannot maintain a decision like that. It becomes exponential for such a tiny, tiny school. And that school has received national recognition. It's a treasure for Richmond. Many, many, many graduates have gone on to do wonderful things for this city. And it impacts morale. It impacts the students. Absolutely, teachers will not want to continue teaching there. It impacts the students. And those things are not recoverable. The infrastructure of the school cannot continue.
Thirty seconds.
And the education cannot go on. So you can't rebuild. It's going to cost more money than you have to continue. You made some great points about how much money is spent and how much it takes to continue. But it will cost much more and you'll never be able to recover what you've lost. So I urge you all to do the right thing and to leave a good legacy, and to leave a good legacy, not to destroy what is so important to us here. Thank you.
Ma'am? Ma'am? Could you please state your name?
Marsha Yewa.
Marsha Yewa, thank you. Thank you. And as you come forward to speak, please sign in as well as state your name for the record. Thank you.
Sorry. I'm a little nervous. You have to forgive me. I'm a little nervous. I'm representing the Breckin' Out Book Festival and the North Family Educational Trust. My name is Kathleen Moore. And I emailed you guys earlier. I'm sure you changed it up a little bit. But my father was kind of a legacy here in the city of Richmond. There are some of you that know of him. There are some of you that don't. But he started as a teacher at Chimborazo and went on to the Gift and Intelligent Program and then went on to become an administrator for many, many years. And his last school was Oak Grove Belmied Elementary. We started a trust on his, in his memory when he passed away in 2013. We give away books in areas of Richmond, specifically through the public schools, to kids, teenagers and adults who wouldn't otherwise have access, like a closed public library or a bookstore in their neighborhood. That is what we try to do. I'm a product of Richmond Public Schools' education. My kids are too. My daughter graduated from Open High School. I have six children total. Three of my own and three that are mined by love and the court says, actually, were also in Richmond Public Schools. The point I'm trying to make here is that without art in the school, without maintaining the programs that we have, kids aren't going to get the same education I had that any of you had, that my daughter had at Open High School. My father was a huge proponent of the arts. He was an artist. He was an artist himself. He encouraged us to participate in everything, from music to dance to acting to painting to drawing. We even took care of the first computer that Richmond Public Schools actually owned over the summer so it wouldn't get stolen out of the building. It was an Apple IIb. And we all learned how to program in Apple Basic. He had three daughters. Thank you to Richmond Public Schools that went into the AFO program, the Arts Foundation program at UCU. And two of those daughters were thank you to Open High School's art program, which has remained the same throughout these years. My daughter went to Guilford College in North Carolina and thank you to Open High School's art program. She graduated with a Bachelor's of Fine Arts and Drama. We can do and encourage creativity, but we have to expect the school system that we believe in and attended and teach in and pay for and support to provide an all-around education for our kids, which includes everything. Fine arts, English, social studies, you know, Latin, French. All of these things. We need these things for our kids to be who they need to be as adults. You know, I'm also talking about reading assistance in special education. Everything that comes in between all of these things that you're talking about cutting, what happens to those programs? You know, it is a proven fact that music can help students with math. Art fosters creativity in many, many areas. And Latin, and I've been hit on this one. Latin, although it is a dead language, it helps kids understand the structure behind the English language. Without Latin, you have to be able to understand it, you know, to help you with that. You know, you take these things out of school, you take these things out of the individuals. You take these things away from people who would otherwise not have a better chance. Richmond Public Schools is fostering a generation of children who know how to test well but not how to think, who could be unable to express themselves well or believe that they are nothing more than a test score to boost a teacher's...
Thirty seconds. Thank you. By removing art, language, recess, music, and other elective activities, you're taking the fun and excitement out of learning. Teachers are already forced to teach to the test. Why do they also have to churn out automatons that can test but not think or create? Johann Wolfgang von Geterer said, "One ought to every day at least hear a little song, read a good poem, see a fine picture, and if it were possible, to speak a few reasonable words." Let our kids have music, poetry, fine arts, and foreign languages. They need them.
Okay. There's no way I'm going to win here, all right? So here's the situation. Every speaker only has two minutes, based on the number of people that are in line. So sorry, but that's what we're going to have to stick to for the rest of the evening. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Kirsten Gray and I'm speaking on behalf of Alliance for Progressive Values and as a parent of two Richmond Public School kids. This speech or whatever it is is a bit choppy because it's been a hairy and hot week. I've been fighting for smaller class sizes at Thomas Jefferson, especially electives, where they stuff thirty-five or over kids in arts or language classes. And at times, half the class may be a combination of IDPs, 504s, and ESL. Electives are necessary for working towards diplomas and advanced diplomas. My daughter experienced classes like this in ninth and tenth grade, and it was impossible for her to focus, to hear, and the arts are her strong suit. Students walk out of classes where they are warehoused, and it's impossible for a teacher to reach students in such an environment. I hope children in all schools are considered. I have two children, one in a small specialty school and one in a comprehensive school. And I do not feel one child is more deserving than the other of electives or small class sizes. I don't see one child as more special than the other. All are deserving of a full program. And to warehouse children in electives for graduation... I mean, I'm sorry. And to warehouse children in electives necessary for graduation and diplomas is wrong. School budget cuts force systems to choose which children to deny in education and divide families to fight over crumbs. The very...
Thirty seconds.
I'm from an organization. I mean, I actually have...
I'm sorry. Go ahead and try to close your thoughts on purpose. Just...
Well, the way the public received info regarding cuts in arts and languages was horrendous. We were not informed from the top or through the press. Instead, it trickled through social media during graduation and last week of school, threw us into confusion and panic. We were not given the opportunity to ask questions, hold discussion, participate in decision-making process. We still don't know what is being cut at my daughter's school at TJ. We don't even know who our principal will be. Either way, this has been about a lack of transparency and short notice. Let's not go back.
Good evening. My name is Richwood Allen. I speak before you tonight as an alumnus of TJ and a member of the Alliance for Progressive Values. This past December, I attended a Christmas program at TJ, and I was astonished. They had an orchestra, a choir, a harp concert, woodwinds, strings, and horns. It would be a tragedy to lose these programs at any school. They make the school better and they make us better. Leveling does not work for the arts because art and music are always under-enrolled. Reallocation as a component of leveling is insufficient, as I understand the process. The information I have heard is not reassuring. My concern is that RPS students will lose these programs. Please don't let that happen. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm Scott Price. I am the president of the Alliance for Progressive Values. We're a Richmond-based, not-for-profit organization. I recognize all of you from our candidate forum three years ago. And I hope to see all of you at our candidate forum next year, where you'll have more than 180 seconds to discuss this problem. I have a couple of things I want to point out. The gentleman said that it costs $28,000 a year to pay to incarcerate someone. Is he aware of the metrics that correlate to the effect that arts and language programs have on incarceration? The money that you're throwing away now is money that will be spent putting people in jail. I want to point something else out. You know, look where we're at. This was built for concerts. This was built for plays. Is this where we're basically going to take the SOLs? I mean, I'm sorry. I don't mean to be glib. But, one, it's really hot outside and makes me cranky. But it is really, really important that we get a grip on this. I know your job is hard. I'm fully aware that you have a budget shortfall. You know what? You're going to have a budget shortfall next year, too. Please, please, don't put this on the backs of students. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm Marsha Jewell and I represent NAACP Education Committee as well as Richmond Coalition for Quality Education. I had a lot of fun since I attended this past Saturday and I thank you for participating. Two minutes is a trip away from my ability to be diplomatic, Mr. Chairman. So I'm coming with the down and dirty. What we have here is a failure to communicate. And what occurred is nothing short of an insult to all of these parents and these children and these teachers. And I'm hearing talk about cutting arts programs. I understand that Lucille Brown, we're going to lose two math teachers, two English teachers, and one history teacher. And Open, we're going to lose a core subject teacher. At Military, we're going to lose core subject teachers. Now, when you say leveling, I never heard the term before until this weekend. A lot of us, including me, understand that to mean a rip or reduction in force. There are at least protocols in reduction in force that are fair and mitigate undue treatment against those affected. In this, nobody knows what's going on. I was one who got agreement from six council people lobbying for your increased budget this year. You've got $19 million more than flat funding. Don't these folks deserve to know what that $19 million is for? It's a secret. And yet you want to cut positions and put people in freefall in the dark? We need transparency. The minority side of this board has been begging for it all term. This is no way to treat people. Thank you.
Hello, members of school board. My name is Caroline Cox and I'm a former teacher, a former substitute teacher at Open High, Richmond Community High School, and many other schools in the city of Richmond. I'm here to speak about the situation with the teachers and the students. My mother is 84 years old. And one of the things she said to me today is the biggest difference in her life as a student was being given a small book with pictures of Rembrandt and famous artists. She said it made a world of difference in how she conceived of the world. But with Open High School in particular, it's not just about art, is it? It's about one English teacher position, half a science teacher position, half a foreign language teacher position, and half an art teacher position, which, unless I'm much mistaken, represents an experienced teacher who's been there for, to my knowledge, 20 years. So it looks a little bit, although you're leveling across the board, like there is some retaliation against Open High School for their exercise of free speech about the stadium issue. And I wonder where that might be coming from. Because for a small school like Open High School, you're talking about two and a half entire teacher positions there. So since it looks like their enrollment hasn't gone down, what's going on? Really? Seriously? Now, in terms of student-teacher ratio, you know, we all know, that the higher the student-to-teacher ratio, the less individualized attention a student is going to get.
Thirty seconds.
So if that's an issue, why don't you get the students, you have a chance to re-enroll. If it's an enrollment problem, let them re-enroll and then you can have your teachers back. I mean, it can't be that hard just to send them a little bit of paperwork. Then the teachers can get their jobs back. And then maybe you could help the other schools be just as good as Open High School that ranks among the top in the nation, instead of bringing all of the schools down and particularly targeting Open High. Thank you for your time.
My name is Bradley Heath and I am currently a student in Richmond Public Schools. And I'm going to be transferring to Open High School next year as a junior. And I will be voicing my concerns over the cutting back of teachings and electives in the fine arts programs. Electives, to me and many other students, are just as important as core classes. We're still learning and receiving an education. Making cuts would be detrimental. Electives allow us individuality. We all take the same core classes. However, electives provide us with some individuality. And it helps shape our high school careers towards our own specific futures, whether it be culinary arts, foreign language, business and marketing, acting, and many other capabilities. Students should be allowed to choose their electives without the constraint of having solely core classes. Teachers in schools have been getting the short end of the stick for years. We, as a nation, are becoming a test-first, learn-second society. If the desire to make Richmond a world-class city is a genuine one, then we need to invest in the children, our future, and the teachers. It's concerning that funds are going to something like a baseball field when there is an immediate, verifiable need in the city for funds to improve facilities and attract and retain quality teachers. And another point. The standards of learning tests are depriving our teachers' ability to teach useful information on the subject at hand.
Thirty seconds.
For example, I had to take the Algebra II SOL this year. Did I learn any of the math? No. Do you know what the math teacher told us? Plug it in the calculator. That's all we had to do. It's ridiculous. If I had to take a regular final exam, I would fail. Everybody would fail. Oh, my God. And I went to Thomas Jefferson this past year.
Ten.
What I want... I understand that we need a curriculum, a standard, right? I understand that. But the way the standards of learning tests, how we have to cram at the end of the year for just some useless grade on a teacher, it's ridiculous. I mean, it's not just in math. It's in history. In order to pass the SOL, you essentially need a 50%. And the company that makes the SOL gets money every time it's administered, even retakes. There's some corruption there. And it's ridiculous. It's like they're setting us up to fail.
Hey, thank you, young man. All right. Also, is there anyone else who would like to address the board tonight? You will need to be in the line to my right. Anyone else?
Hi. My name is Shaila Musani and I go to Thomas Jefferson High School. I take IB classes and advanced classes as well as regular-level courses. And I've come to realize that the kids who are not as academic and need more assistance in their studies are crammed into overcrowded classes where it is difficult for them to focus and learn. Most students who are more academically driven and already making good grades are given the benefit of smaller classes where they get the chance to engage in more close-knit intellectual conversations. It's unfair. And on a side note, I do believe that dance classes should be offered at TJ as a PE credit. A ton of kids would sign up for that.
Hello. Okay. Well, I'm a former, well, rising junior at Open High School. And I just want to say that teachers at Open High School don't just teach us the academics, but they inspire us to become great and successful. You see, Open is like a family to me. And whenever I need help or I always feel as though I need the help or extra help, I know that I have a place to turn to. Whether it be educational or personal, Open is home. Teachers at Open have families, too. So why come back to their work and place them somewhere else? Thank you. Stay.
Say your name on the record, please.
Autumn High. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Naomi Thompson. I'm a rising sophomore at Open High. When I found out what was going on with the budget cuts with teachers, I was very saddened to hear. It was my first year at Open High. It had been a very great experience. I don't think I would have experienced it in any other place. And to hear that some first-year teachers and teachers that have been there for a while would be gone my second year or even cut back, I thought that was very unfair. I feel as if, when I heard my art teacher, Bridgette, was getting cut, she basically runs the school. So if she's getting going part-time, who's going to take care? Who's going to help us with all the extra activities when nobody else can? For our arts program to be cut, Open already doesn't have a band or orchestra or choir. And some go to our zone school to participate in those activities. So I feel there is no need to cut anything else at Open. I also feel that Open has been the target of some very bad things lately, i.e. when the Bedford case, how y'all wanted to put Open into Bedford or combine the two. And I feel, you know, with Pete leaving us and having a new principal, I feel like everything is all over the place and there's no structure with the school board or RPS anymore. And there were cases of youth teaching college classes or going to Boston. And so for all this to happen, are you even still going to be here next year if all this is going on? That's my only question.
Yes, yes.
Superintendent Baden, Chairman Coleman, and members of the school board, my name is Susan Dabren, and I'm a veteran teacher of the school division. I've had the opportunity to speak before you on behalf of the Arts and Humanities Center and Arts Programs. And while many questions obviously remain, and much needs to be done regarding these issues, I'm here tonight to answer a question posed by Mr. Stidibant at the school board meeting on June first. Drawing attention to the fact that the new teacher salary schedule lists teachers with zero to nine years of experience together on step three, you asked if teachers had to wait nine years to get a raise. Mr. Westby said, "No, they are receiving raises now." The better question would have been, are teachers transferring into the system with nine years of experience, willing to accept a beginning-level salary? And my guess is, no. Ten years is about one-third of a teacher's career. Do you not think that they should be one-third up the salary schedule? My guess is that experienced teachers are transferring into the system. They're placed on higher steps than the veteran teachers, and there is a precedence for this. I entered the school division in nineteen eighty-four, and the following years went from step one to two to three to zero, to two to one to zero to two. By nineteen ninety-two, it was finally admitted by the division that veteran teachers are being paid less than new arrivals as new teachers were put on a higher step. A chart was published which showed these discrepancies. And while the plan was enacted to provide some minimal compensation, I'm not sure the procedure was changed. So to answer your second question, Mr. Stidibant, will teachers lose money? The answer really is yes, thirty seconds. Over time, if teachers are not placed on the appropriate and expected salary schedule, they will lose annual compensation and future retirement compensation. Now, in year thirty-one, as recently as the July first, twenty-ten salary schedule, a thirty-one-year veteran teacher was placed on step seventeen. I am still languishing far below that, where I have been since 'oh-six, 'oh-seven. I've always been proud to be part of Richmond Public Schools, but I certainly think we can do better. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Carolyn Owen. I'm a student of Richmond Community High School, which, by the way, is number eight in the state. And those who do not know, Richmond Community has a student body of two-hundred-and-thirty. And I do not think that you should base of the number of students in each class on these smaller-body schools, because that's just not fair, because we do not have twenty-two students to fill out one class. And I have come here to speak to you because I do not think this decision is good for the students or the schools at all. I know this budget is short, but I think you should relook at the members of the downtown board and maybe do some changes there. And remove unnecessary positions. I know without art and drama, I don't know where my life would be, because like other students, you use arts sports for an hour, outlet. I use art, and I speak for many people when I say I use an outlet. And all students are the same, and you shouldn't make the schools the same either. So please keep the arts at our school.
Good evening, Dr. Baden and school board members. My name is Jenny Irwin. I have three students. Why did I have three? One just graduated with honors from Thomas Jefferson High School and received thirty thousand dollars in scholarships at PCU this fall. I'm speaking on behalf of my daughter, who attends Richmond Community High School and has an IEP. I found out Friday she will no longer have a case manager, which, according to federal law, is illegal. I wish we had some heads up on this. The only thing we learned was that at her last IEP meeting, she wouldn't have the same case manager. I did not realize, ma'am, that she wouldn't have any case manager. Message this to me and other students with IEPs at specialty schools is that they're not wanted there, they don't deserve to be there, which is not the case. This is extremely unfair. And I don't understand why you didn't want her to come to us first, besides doing the white, everybody was in the middle of graduations and the end of the school year. But I expect transparency from you guys. Not a throwback to five years ago, when I was seriously thinking about moving to the county. You guys are better than this. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Baden and school board members. My name is Katie DeLuca. And I have to say, this weekend, I was pleased by the email responses I got from all of you and your willingness to engage on a support topic. I just wanted to make a few brief points and actually set out a challenge for you. I think leveling is a one-size-fits-all solution to our schools. If there are so many different metrics that you could use that could come up with different results, none of which would be satisfactory or would give an adequate picture of how our scarce resources should be distributed fairly among our students. For example, at Open High, we have, I have a daughter who's a rising senior. And while we do have one art teacher, we have no music teachers, we have no band, we have no after-school programs, we have no coaches, we have no sports. We don't use the public city buses. And we're all okay with that. When we signed up to go to Open, it was, we knew we were giving up those luxuries that every other school in the country has in exchange for these small class sizes. And in particular, when I found out we were talking about cutting a very valuable member of our community, our art teacher, who does so much more than just teach art to our students, due to the nature of the way that Open is structured. Also, our teachers, if they go part-time, we're going to be losing family heads, which is an incredibly important part to the community of Open. And we're also going to be losing the opportunity that all these, where all these teachers spend time tutoring in order to take our students who are struggling a little bit with the harder curriculum and help them advance the fans. So I just challenge you all to try to come up with another solution in a creative way of approaching this honestly very difficult problem. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Michaela Willoughby, and I'm a student of, well, I'm a rising sophomore at Richmond Community High School. I just wanted to talk about how, before I came to Community, I did not think I had any musical talent at all. And then, like, when I was looking at the elective choices, I saw that they offered harp here at Community. And I went from knowing pretty much nothing about the harp, or almost barely even knowing how to read music, to playing at ceremonies in my school. And it's just been great, but just now today, I found out that they might be cutting harp, and they probably are cutting harp. And it's kind of, it's troubling, because I just learned how to play. And they're cutting other programs, well, other classes, like Japanese and oceanography. And I know a lot of people who never even thought about that language or that subject. And it's sort of just like taking it away. And Richmond Community, it's a very small school, so we don't really have that many options when it comes to electives in the first place. So I just don't understand why you want to make them even less options. So that's it. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Anita Willoughby, and that was my daughter just ahead. I'm very, very proud of her. And I really, I'm here, this is my first board meeting, because she called me at work and said, exactly, pretty much, "Mom, there's a meeting. I want to go. I need to understand what's going on. They're getting rid of me on this program." She's correct. I've seen her, watched her play at a concert on an instrument that I didn't even understand or seen, or would have never had the opportunity to give her. I watched her perform, looked beautiful, looked proud, and was shocked. They were sending videos all over our family going, "Look at this. What is this? What's she doing?" The other part, the other thing is when she told me she learned this through Facebook. And then I came here, and I hope to get a better understanding of exactly what we're here to do today. I don't know that I got that. So I was suggesting to her that maybe, and I suggest to you, that maybe the same technique in which we got misinformation, we could use to get some accurate information, and maybe just rethink this thing. And so I don't have a lot to say, because I don't know that I have a clear, clear understanding of what's going on. But I know it was important to her, and I wanted to support her. So that's pretty much what I want to put for today. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members, and Dr. Baden. I'm Teresa Hayes, and I'm a science teacher at Lucille Brown Little School. We did find out about the reallocations at Brown a little bit earlier than it sounds like a lot of people heard about, you know, from other schools. However, this year at Brown, we have had some very low-required classes. And our class sizes are, they're ranging about like twenty-seven to one. And now we're losing some core teachers, five core teachers. And I don't understand how that is going to enable us to get to a twenty-two-to-one ratio when, I know our numbers are probably going to go down a little bit, but I don't think they're going down that much. Maybe thirty or forty students is what I understand. Also, I just wanted to express my appreciation for your having to deal with such a limited budget. And what is it that we can do to encourage something different with budgets? You know, some fully funding of things that are needed in the school? And lastly, I am so proud of our students coming forward in civil discourse to express their concerns. They have been well-spoken, well-behaved, and I just can't say enough. I was so proud when I heard from my daughter-in-law that my granddaughter was involved in this and everything. So kudos for our RPS students.
Good evening. Thank you, guys, for being here and listening to us all. You guys look like you're having way too much fun. I know you've got a tough job, and so do these students. We came from here in our county to Richmond. We spent quite a few years right now looking to buy a house because we believed in this system. And right now, I feel really let down. You've got a lot of students right here in front of you that care about their education. And you don't find that in a lot of places. It's huge. When have you ever, personally in my life, seen this many students come out and fight to learn? Fight to have arts, to have English, history, math? This stuff matters. It counts. You've got to look at them. You have to listen to them. I come out here not with a solution, and I apologize for that, because I can't give you a solution to the problem that you're facing. But I plead for you to listen to these students, to take into account, to figure out something, something, anything. We are here to help. We are here to get involved. Tell us a way to make this happen. Because they come out to fight for it, do you not think they will come out to make it happen? It doesn't really matter when you tell the teachers they're getting cut, beginning, the middle, or the end of the year. Cutting teachers, increasing class sizes, doesn't solve any of your problems. It's just going to continue to create more. Thank you very much.
My name is Alex Curran. I'm a former Richmond Community High School student. I graduated last summer. I'm currently a student at PCU. I came here to cover this meeting for a class, actually. And I wasn't going to say anything, but to sit here and listen to what our students have to say, what our parents have to say, and what our staff has to say about this really shows, I think, that this is a very serious issue and needs to be handled. I heard about these cuts recently. Because of the amount of currently Richmond Public School students, I have no clue. And like Ms. Harris Mohammed said, to tell the staff of these schools the last week, or the week, you know, last Friday, when then the school year and graduation was coming up, is disrespectful, and it shows a lack of concern for our community. I think, rather than working to re-level and reallocate so everything fits to a certain level, I think we need to spend more time really working on improving our schools as a whole. And I understand you all have a very tough job, and that there's a lot of budget issues. But it just seems to me like there is a lack of caution about this. And it seems to me, thirty seconds, that more time and more attention really needs to be paid to this. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Emily DuGua. I'm a alum of Open High, as well as the sibling and daughter of Open High alum. When I first came to Open High, I transferred as a student from a more traditional school. Open High, honestly, had limited resources, a crumbling infrastructure, and limited class sizes in the beginning. The one thing that mitigated all of that, all of what assumedly were from previous budget cuts, were the teachers at Open High. They took on not only the role of the teachers in their subjects, but several different roles. For instance, the art teacher, who's been mentioned several times before, was also the gym teacher and the drama teacher, and I believe taught an English class before that. She, I learned more about history and research from her art history class than I had in all of my previous years of history in public school. Furthermore, the whole setup of Open relies on teachers. It isn't simply, because we give up so much. We give up, we give up all, many of the subjects, including core subjects that we would have at a traditional school. We give up extracurriculars that, at our school, we don't have sports. We don't have, we don't have theater. We didn't even have a cafeteria when I was there.
Thirty seconds.
But what we did have was these educators. You aren't going to be able to get that art teacher back. You aren't going to be able to get the teachers back. And you're putting students in an impossible position where they've already given up some things to go to Open. And now they're forced to give up more, more of the individual instruction that they came to Open High School for. I understand that budgeting is a huge issue, but Open High has never had a huge budget.
Ten.
Thank you.
You can finish your thoughts.
Thank you. We've never had a huge budget, but they've always had, but they've always had the educators who have been there for so long. The art teacher not only taught me, but taught my mother. To lose her is more than to lose a line item on budget. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Coleman.
I just would like to leave that.
Mr. Tullman.
Thank you. I just want to take a moment to thank everyone for coming out and letting your voices be heard. It's so important, and it really does matter. And with that being said, I would like to make a motion to stop the implementation of the leveling process at all secondary schools until the board has had an opportunity to understand the full impact on students and teachers. Thank you.
Ms. Taylor, could you please re-speak your motion, may I have your hand up or?
Oh, certainly. I would like to make a motion to stop the implementation of the leveling process at all secondary schools until the board has had an opportunity to fully be informed about this teacher and student impact.
Mr. Chairman, a friendly amendment?
Ms. Mohammed.
I would like to add a friendly amendment, add on to Mrs. Taylor's motion to say that in addition to that, the administration provide, or in a, excuse me, in a, in the next work session, the administration provide to us all detailed information pertaining to every impact, teacher or otherwise, for this leveling process. At the next work session, since it has already been discussed amongst them, it should not be difficult getting us that information. Because I do respect, and let me say this, I do respect, they're already thinking about September the eighth. They're already there. Even though schools just closed last week, they're already thinking about September. So with that being said, to provide that information by the next work session. I would just need to know when that is. That's what I'm saying. If Mrs. Taylor is open to that friendly amendment?
Okay, that's fine.
That's fine. I just need to know when the next work session is. Okay.
Okay, discussion.
Dr. Benning, can you speak to whether or not July thirteenth is feasible? Is that a reasonable amount of time?
July thirteenth is fine for the paper information, but I think that Mr. Westbay may need to speak to significance potentially of it as well as HR with regards to teacher assignments. Which potentially would have, one of the other issues that we were addressing with this was to cut out the wholesale mass of changing of teachers in October. It also may have a potential impact on all the schedules that were already done for students. This came about because of a needs-based schedule, meaning that the resources are allocated also where students register for courses. So that is a potential impact on this process. It is unfortunate that part of our challenge is our open enrollment process. Our budget, when it came, because we didn't know the resources we were going to have. So what I'm disturbed about a little bit, and I get the concern, I agree with you, is when we asked why was there such a late notice, our own budgetary process and our own enrollment process pushed this whole process back. So we also adopted a budget that has a five million dollar hold. So the board can vote to obviously delay the process. There's a potential ripple effect with also other fiscal situations because one of the things that helped us last year was we actually had money in reserve to buy more teachers. So not only did we save positions by reallocating, I think it was about nineteen special ed Michelle teachers that we had to move in October, which was devastating to our students. We also had to buy additional teachers, for instance, at Bull Shaw. And all of that money we don't have available this year. So there's just a lot of things that we were trying to get in front of this year, given the challenges that we are dealing with fiscal. So we can get you that information, but I just think you need to be aware of the potential ripple effect with a lot of other things that may happen. Because other schools, some schools that gained, will now no longer potentially have those teachers that we had to reassign to deal with the large class sizes that some of the people spoke about. Some of these people actually are going to other schools or sharing with other schools to pull their enrollment numbers down.
Okay, Ms. Gray.
I can say that I'm in agreement with the lack of communication. And I attended Open High myself, and the art instruction, the art history course there was one of the most meaningful courses and most impactful on my education with that teacher. However, I don't know what the impact will be on the other side if we're going to halt the process that's fixing our budget woes. So I want to, I want to have more information and I don't want to make decisions in the blind. I do think that we need to have more communication. I think we need to meet with families and find better solutions to how we can address this leveling issue. I think the arts, you know, would be hypocritical for me. As all of my children are artists, all of them attended Richmond Public Schools and found a love for art through Richmond Public Schools. So it's important for us to keep arts and electives in our schools. How we get there is a big question mark for me. And I agree we need to slow down this process and have some better communication with families. To say we're not going to do anything is going to have an impact on the other side. And I would like to see what we're looking at, what the cost of this leveling, what we're saving, how that's balancing the budget, if we need to make some other hard decisions, what those decisions might be, put those out to the public so that we can have a full discourse. But to undo the budget and unravel things without knowing what we're changing, to me would not be the most responsible way to address it. We've got a meeting coming up with Albert Hill Parents. I think we need to have a meeting with all the parents in all of our secondary schools. So, you know, maybe it's a forum like this. I would like to be able to sit down with families and figure out, you know, what folks are willing to give up and what folks are not willing to give up. And we find some place of agreement with that.
Ms. Mohammed.
Ms. Gray, I agree with you. I do because, and I know we don't tend to agree a lot, but I agree with you because there is a downside to that. It is. However, we have been talking about this leveling. If you all remember me saying the night that we voted on the budget, I said, "The leveling process must happen, but we need to communicate right now." And we didn't do that. We didn't do that. We did not do that. So a piece of that I have to withdraw from, even though you made a good point, because we have to do better with communication. And everything doesn't feel good. And I said this to some of the children who reached out to me. I said, "This is a part of you being a young adult right now, expressing some things that don't feel good." Nonetheless, we are held to communicate. We have an accountability that we must master, and we haven't mastered it yet because we do not, we communicate on the backend, when it's a hot mess. And we can no longer do that. So I agree that we need to meet with all the parents. I stated that. Audience sent an email that we need to meet with the parents of Open. Ms. Gray has added, "Meet with all the parents if we can of secondary schools." And we need to do that because we are going to have to, we can't choose to be transparent when it feels good. We have to be transparent all of the time, period. And we were not transparent in this process. And I'm so not trying to cry right now because my daughter has been impacted by this. And it hurts greatly. So we need to have a meeting. I think we need to have the information so we can make a better decision on what we need to do. But I do want to say, as an educator, it has to hap, something has to happen because we have a lack of proportion across the district in our classrooms. And I know you all don't want one classroom with thirty-two students and another classroom with nine. So we have to fix that, right, young people? We gotta fix it. So, but it's the way that we go about fixing things, right? So this has been your first serious democratic process, democratic process.
Thirty seconds.
And you have done well. So I too applaud you. And you know I love you. Every single one of you in this room, you know I love. But that doesn't mean you can call me tomorrow and ask for money. It doesn't mean that. But I do support you.
Ms. Taylor.
Thank you. I just want to begin by saying that transparency is important, is necessary, but it's also about the information that's behind the transparency. When you say a twenty-two to one ratio, that's not equitable across the board. That's not equitable. That means that you can have a six-one in an art class. You can have a thirty-one in a math class. It's just not fair and it's no way to make these type of decisions without having all that information and making an informed decision. Also, I'm concerned because I understand and I'm hearing a lot lately that there's this five million dollar gap. But I also know that the data behind the transparency tells me that we as a board had to present a balanced budget. So if we presented a balanced budget, what is it that you want to bring back that's worth five million dollars that you're willing to take away subject matters that are important and critical to children to compensate for? What does that five million dollars look like? So to me, it's necessary, it's necessary to delay this process so that we can know what are we deciding is important as it relates to education that's going to bring about the kind of difference that we want to see in our public school system. Thank you.
Mr. Boren.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with a lot of things my colleague, Ms. Gray and Ms. Harris Mohammed said. One of the things that I came to quickly realize when the emails started coming, the phone calls started coming, was that we did not do, and we're all in this together. We can point fingers at the administration. We can point fingers at each other. But we are in this together. We are Richmond Public Schools. So we can try and distance ourselves from a lack of communication, but it would be an exercise of futility because we're all part of the same system. We're all trying to do the same thing, which is build the type of school system of the quality, character, and nature that our kids want, expect, and deserve. So if we fell short, if we fell short in not communicating what we were trying to do, why we were trying to do it, and when we were trying to do it. This is one of those things that I think is not, it's not the big and bold sort of education reform that I think we think about when we think about transformation Richmond Public Schools. But it's also one of those things that hasn't been done in years. And I know that Ms. Harris Mohammed, you and I have talked about how long it's been that it hasn't happened and the effect that it's had on our, on our school division and the operation, the structure of it. So it's something that we have to do, as Ms. Harris Mohammed said eloquently. But as she also said, the communication was not what it should have been. And so, so I'll accept that. I know my colleagues and I will accept that. And what we can do is what I heard Dr. Benning commit to, which is, you know, meet, go to the meeting that's been scheduled at Albert Hill, have one with the Open family if they invite us. Let's meet with anybody and everybody that wants to work towards a solution that works first and foremost for our students. Because oftentimes, some of the tough decisions we make are in the best interest of students, but they're uncomfortable and inconvenient for the adults. And to me, I will always come down on the side of making a decision what's best for the students. So let's get together over the next several weeks, talk through solutions, get the right facts, the actual facts on the table with the people, and see if we can't come up with a better, a better level. You know, the more minds you put together on an issue, the better the result would be. So it's my hope that we don't halt the process, but we continue to allow the process to evolve and be tailored specifically for Richmond Public Schools.
Ms. Larson.
Thank you, Mr. Boren, for putting everything I was thinking in words. I want to thank everybody who came out tonight, but especially the students. I loved seeing students involved in public process. When we had all the students that was led by the Open High students last year come out and support our facilities, it was wonderful and I totally appreciate it. And I love the energy that I see in here tonight. I do agree, we could have done a better job of communicating. And, you know, like Mr. Boren said, you know, everybody's sitting in front of you here tonight, everybody in the school system, we're all here together. It's not about pointing fingers. And what I heard Dr. Benning say too is he's working with the folks at Open High and saying, "Hey, do you have a better idea? You know, how can we work together?" So I feel like there's still some fluidness in this process and we can, we can work with you. I appreciate all the feedback I heard about the art teacher tonight. I did not know. She's well-loved. She does everything at the school, clearly. But at the end of the day, you know, that's, my, my decision as a board member is to, you know, work on the budget and work on policy. And decisions of the superintendent and our staff here is to work with the principals to get them what they need. So I can't support halving the process because we need to move forward with the budget as is. But I would strongly encourage and want to see community meetings, want to see the dialogue continue so that there is public input in the process.
Mr. Coleman.
Thank you, Ms. Larson. I too, first of all, would just want to give a huge round of applause to the students that came out tonight. Just amazing. Thank you. The reality of situations like this is that they do affect us personally. I have two daughters graduated from Open High School who both went on and are doing tremendous things. And they unopulitically speak of it was their experience at Open High School as so prepared for their next phases in life. So we're here tonight. And I think as we go on this evening, we're coming closer and closer to the opportunity to really discover something that possibly could help all of us see what we're all really after. And that is, we want what's best for all children, but there are challenges. But I hope that we can position ourselves to recognize that the nine people up here, Dr. Benning, his staff, and all of you who have chosen to come out here tonight, it's Mr. Boren, Ms. Mohammed, Ms. Gray stated, Ms. Larson, everyone up here basically. I believe we can work together to find a solution. But at this point, due to so many factors, stopping this, stopping without having conversations and not having worked through to find a solution is probably going to cause more damage. And I don't think any of us want that to happen. Thank you.
Mr. Sturgess.
Thank you, Ms. Larson. The two biggest issues that I heard tonight and have seen in emails and have experienced throughout this process is that there was a serious breakdown in communication. And as Ms. Taylor and Ms. Gray and others have pointed out, a lack of information, I think, for the public and for us. a lack of information, I think, for the public and for us on the school board. And so something that Mr. Coleman just said that got me thinking. I don't necessarily see this motion as stopping us from finding solutions. I think we still have to find solutions. I think we need to have more information, a better communication as part of that finding that solution. And that's why I support Ms. Taylor's motion tonight.
Dr. Jones.
I'm not going to be redundant and I support much of what my colleagues have said tonight. I too am going to support the motion. I do think that we have to slow the train down a little bit in order to adequately have a collective understanding of what we are accomplishing with this. I certainly began to hear about this leveling thing more and more over the weekend. And it's obvious that there are those here tonight and those that could not make it tonight who are uncomfortable with the way that we are moving. I would suggest if the thirteenth is too late, that perhaps we could work towards a date before the thirteenth of July in order to get this information and make an informed decision about how we move forward. But I don't believe in, you know, moving forward on one end and meeting with the parents of the impacted students, but still kind of putting this thing in motion. I think that we have to kind of say that we're going to stop, that we're going to look at it. We're going to be intentional about it. We're going to have a discourse and dialogue with the community. So for that reason, I'm going to support the motion. And if the thirteenth is too late of a date and to, and it will have ripple impacts for what we're trying to get together for September eighth in the beginning of school, then I would suggest that we get the information before the thirteenth of July. But I do think that we have to step back and look at this through a more objective lens so everybody is moving forward on the same accord. Thank you.
Ms. Chairman. Hold on one second. Mr. West Bay has some information he'd like to share with us.
As chairman of board members, just to, if it's possible, to even call a meeting next week because we can be ready at that point in time. And the sooner we do this, the better. If we wait until the middle of July, we're really going to be hurting in terms of the amount of work that has to go into, depending on the extent of the changes, if there are any. The amount of work that it could cause, particularly for HR, a problem in trying to hire the positions or to fit the positions we need based on the adjustments we're made. It took weeks to get to this point. I mean, the better part of the last eight weeks of daily working, communicating with the principals across the division to get this together at this point. This is not something we can pull the trigger on and do overnight. If the changes are made, then we've got to have time to do this. And we were intending to get the schedules to the students. They want to have schedules in their hands this summer early so that they're well in hand before the school opens next year. So there's just a lot riding on this particular decision. So, I mean, we're ready to jump on and share the information. But the sooner we do this, the better. And certainly, within the next week or so would be ideal.
Excuse me, Mr. Coleman. I had a question. Please.
Did you?
Call the question, please.
Mr. Coleman, I have the floor. I just...
I'm sorry.
Hold on, hold on. Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. Just hold on a second. Do we want to continue to try to be positive or we want to fight each other?
We want to continue to try to be positive.
Okay, so let's take a second. All right, here's the situation. Mr. West Bay was sharing some information. My assumption was, Ms. Gray, that you had a question for Mr. West Bay.
I do, sir.
Is that correct?
Yes.
I will entertain that question.
My question for you, Mr. West Bay, is we have a meeting on the seventeenth planned to discuss solutions with parents at Albert Hill. Can we increase that meeting to include all impacted schools? And will you have, I know we've been given information on this so that we can meet the needs of the families to have that communication and also meet the needs of the administration to get these schedules out in a timely manner. I know that since we came on the board, many of us have really been disappointed about kids sitting in the auditorium without a schedule for weeks at the beginning of the school year. We stress the need to get these master, a bachelor master schedule. I've been on this board for six years. This is the first time I've really ever seen this information. So that is a step in the right direction. But I would like to know, will we be prepared to have that discussion on the seventeenth? Can we open it up to everyone? And can we come to some solution there? Because I know that we're trying to balance a lot of things. I know Dr. Ben just said there will be a fiscal impact if we don't move forward with some of these changes. So I'd like to have a conversation, reach a solution, get this information that we're getting right now up on the web so the families can look at it and understand the logic behind a lot of the decision-making. Will we be prepared on the seventeenth? And could that be a time for the board to come together?
We can have the information available and ready. I also like to say that it does have potential budgetary implications because depending on the decisions you make, how we end up configuring the schedules, it could require us to hire additional positions. So right now, we're talking about a sum of around 1.7 million in the reallocations. That's what's involved in this process at this point. So, I mean, it has that potential. We talked about a budget shortfall. That was relating back to when you made the final adoption of the budget. We had the items in green that didn't make it into the final adoption, which was the technology and maintaining existing levels of service. That's that 4.4 million we were referencing at that point. Those dollars we're talking about now. Our hope is that we have the same amount of turnover next year that we had this year that would offset the majority of that. That was the plan. When you adopted the budget, we set that as our hope in how we would address the budget that was coming here.
Okay. Any more questions for Mr. West Bay? Ms. Taylor. She called questions. We require the second. Okay, I have a question.
Question was called by Ms. Taylor. The second is by Mrs. Pinky S. To end the debate, Mr. Sturtevant?
Yes.
Ms. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Bourne? Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Harris Mohammed?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Pinky S?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Motion passes by zero as a motion on the floor was made by Mrs. Taylor, seconded by Mrs. Pinky S. To stop the implementation of the leveling process at all secondary schools and to the board's fully deformed of teachers to the impact with the information to be provided at the next work session. Mr. Sturtevant?
Yes.
Ms. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Bourne?
No.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Harris Mohammed?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Pinky S?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
No.
Mr. Coleman?
No.
Motion passes.
All right. Thank you so much. We're going to take a couple minute recess here. I guess all of you want to stay and enjoy the rest of this wonderful meeting that we had today.
Well, I mean, open high school, it's not just about art. A whole English teacher. Oh, that was, I didn't know about that. So that's actually three home teachers.
Math teachers leaving.
And if the statue, right.
Which is teachers.
But with, if there's actually 230 students, they actually have higher than that. So they got more enrollment of teachers. So it puts up with that. And I mean, I've totally forgotten about the fans. No, it makes a huge difference. So if you could talk to Michelle and see if there's any way that maybe open. I just.
Teach herself.
Your daughter?
Daughter.
No, Abby.
Abby.
Name with an A. Anyway, Emmy. And see if there's any way, especially if you make your request to re-register. Because if they re-register with the new students, they're registered for art. And maybe a few people trying to register with science or athletics.
Will they only allow them during senior year? Freshman, really?
That's cute.
They don't have, they don't have this thing in their schedule.
Okay, but see juniors and seniors.
Yeah.
So then if juniors and seniors, if juniors and seniors are willing to pre-register and add art to their schedule, so we may feel like changing our history. And if they could, because if you, all you could take would be say, let's say 10 more students.
This is what happens. I don't know. What did teachers have to do with this? And then it was told, this was out there. Hey guys, you want to go to the park, you guys want to comment out?
Right.
And I was like, no. No, 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 not that happened. Because it's not just about art. And it's, it's not open to the client. I just want their.
And they're cutting themselves brown. They're cutting their teeth. Yeah, yeah. So it sounds like to me like the school board hasn't gotten the information they need from that. Yeah, it was a great speech, really. And, and I mean, well, emotion will work. Yeah, no, but you didn't act mad. And you started, I mean, you acted passionate, not mad. Well, I mean, it's not something to not. If they had a balanced budget.
That's city council. The school board, the school.
That means they're gonna pay for the stadium, and they're gonna pay for the students camp, and a step game as well. And the race, yeah, the bike race, yes.
The school board has no power.
I know, but it issue is. But, I mean, I don't, I, I just had to bring up the stadium. Because it really, and, and like the school issues.
In the race, like. Who was it that brought up the office room in?
Yeah, yeah. They're, they're concentrating on bricks and mortar. That's the problem when you concentrate on.
And it takes the two, two new elementary schools. Did not get their certificate of medical license. Their habit made its problems.
And here's the control. And see, the thing is with open high school, even developers trying to go after that building for a few years. And it's probably, there's a developer in this action somewhere. Eliminate the teachers. You, you, you don't have as good a relationship with the students. The students drop off, the scores plummet. The biggest. Now, the problem is, there's a DUs, keep that on. The DUs, it says it has to be used for education. But the way around it.
Yeah, they are, I love the way they're doing it. That's what I thought.
Yeah, that had to be part of it.
I didn't even think about that. I was thinking about the developers trying to turn it into.
How specific, how specific is that?
That's not education.
How, well, how, how specific is that? Is it specific to make your twelve?
I haven't seen in about ten years. It's actually, it may be up, it used to be up on the internet. I put it up there, but I think it's down there. But it's, it's in Grace Aaron's world. So that's, that's where we're at. I don't know how. All I know is the former school board person pulled it up and that, that quieted me down. They've been after open high school.
Something else, if there are schools that are benefiting this process, we do not hear from them.
But they should have been here, and there's a reason why they weren't here.
Because, because they're happy, and they have, they don't, they don't, well, they, well, they don't have the social media.
They don't have the teachers that are.
They're also.
Board members, if we can make our way back to the stage, please. Board members, if we can make our way back to the stage. Thank you so much. Board members, please, quickly, quickly. Board members, please, thank you so much. If you could return to your seats. We have an extensive rest of this agenda and an extensive closing. All right, Madam Plurter.
The next item on the agenda is five year academic improvement items. Five point zero one, receive a presentation from Skillsoft USA.
Okay. All right, board members, it looks as if they are using large screen here for their presentation.
Mr. Coleman, the board member of Skillsoft USA, is going to share with you your weekly report. Through, they introduced us through partnership with Capital One. And what they are bringing to the table is an opportunity to provide a digital platform based professional learning for our support staff as well as our professional staff. One significant area is our ability to, or inability right now to address large scale customer service training, for example, which is part of this project.
Good evening, my name is Carlina Davis. I'm a regional account executive with Skillsoft Corporation. Here this evening to present, to talk to you about the five Cs to build a better Richmond Public Schools district. This is my colleague Chuck Bond. I'll let Chuck introduce himself.
Hello, my name is Charles Bond. I go by Chuck. I'm a resident here in Richmond, and I too work for Skillsoft. And Carlina and I are partnering together to support Richmond Public School.
So if you're not familiar with Skillsoft and who we are and what we do, we basically, to sum it up in a one statement, is we improve the performance of organizations by improving the performance of their people. We took a look at Richmond Public Schools strategic plan, as well as had a conversation with Dr. Bedden and his team. And there's some key things that stood out to us where we felt like Skillsoft could help align what we do to bring a benefit to the teachers, the faculty and staff of Richmond Public Schools. So one of the things that stood out in your strategic plan was to retain high quality faculty and staff and administrators, as well as maximize their effectiveness. The other thing is to align people and resources to maximize impact. And the way Skillsoft is able to do that with the organizations that we've worked with is to align our resources to organization's strategic plan, as well as some of the things they're looking to implement in regards to training their employees. So through our conversations with Dr. Bedden and his team, we scoped out five Cs to building a better RPS district. One of the ones that stands out from what I've heard today is communication. So making sure you have effective communication across the district. And Skillsoft's content, resources and assets can, can be aligned to that particular goal. Compliance is another area that we can help build a better RPS district. So things like sexual harassment training, FERPA training, Title IX training are all courses that can be sent out to employees district wide to be able to increase or reduce risk in regards to compliance. Customer service, Dr. Bedden actually just talked about our customer service program. We offer courses as well as books and online videos that can be aligned to build a learning program around customer service, as well as different competency based learning. So things like time management, listening skills, writing skills are all competency based learning that we offer at Skillsoft. In regards to building a learning culture, we've found through our research at Skillsoft that organizations with a strong learning culture outperform their employees. I'm a regional account executive with Skillsoft focusing primarily with higher education institutions, school districts, as well as local and state government agencies. So the customers that work directly, that I work directly with have a strong learning culture and really believe in, in having their employees focus on learning. So a strong learning culture provides rate of productivity by 37% as well as 17% of those organizations are likely to be market leaders. So why Skillsoft? Skillsoft is a market leader. We have over 6,000 customers across the globe and 19 million end users use our, our product across the globe. A huge depth and breadth of comprehensive e-learning portfolio. So not only online courses that we offer, we also offer online books, as well as videos. As I mentioned, I have a reach across higher education, as well as local and state government and school districts. One of the districts that I work with directly is Fairfax County Public Schools. They work with Skillsoft to provide professional development resources to not only their teachers, but their staff and administrators. So we align our content to some of the, to their strategic plan and goals that they're looking to achieve within their school district.
So, can you go ahead and build that out, please? Next. One more time. Thank you. This is really difficult. I'm used to looking at what I present, so, if you don't mind. So, as Carlina talked about, Skillsoft's an online learning company. If you're familiar with online training and the benefits associated with online training, it's about leveraging technology to save time, save money, reduce travel expenses, and fit training into people's schedule so that they can be more productive in their workday, as well as their ongoing professional development. So that's our goal in bringing this solution to your organization. Can we go to the next slide, please? What you saw previously, I'm sorry, is that there's three, three core areas that we focus in delivering our solution. The first is going to be in content. The second's going to be in our technology. And the third is going to be the services that are required to align our offerings to your priorities, your objectives, individual teachers' professional development goals, so that they can achieve their own development objectives. So that's, that's the core focus of our organization. That's what we bring to each of our solutions. Each relationship is managed by a customer success consultant. This person is responsible for taking this, this mass amount of content and helping organizations learn how to digest it, align it, and deliver it in the most effective and efficient way. So, from everything from program design, which is how do we take those five Cs? How do we pull out the content that is most relevant to those five Cs? So it aligns to what you're trying to achieve, either at a manager's level, an individual contributor level, or at a senior leader's level. Curriculum, curriculum design is where we build that out. Technical plan is where we actually integrate that into your infrastructure so that the content can be delivered on PCs, your mobile devices, on your tablets as well. Marketing and communication, the consultant is going to help your organization integrate our content, the messaging behind learning, the value behind development, ongoing, continuous learning, so that individuals know when, where, and why training is important to them, and they're able to get the right training at the right time. As we continue on, the administrative processes, we talked about compliance training, for example. Everyone needs to have harassment training. You need to be able to demonstrate that everyone's taking this training. Our solution, the system behind the scenes tracks all of this activity. You're able to monitor the completion activity, as well as the recurrence of that training that's required by law, so that you're able to identify who's in compliance, who's out of compliance, and do that very easily. So, a lot of organizations today manage this through spreadsheets. We manage this through dashboards and through technology. It's a simple report that an individual manager or an administrator can run through the system. Lastly, performance measurement. We've heard a lot about budgets and numbers tonight. With all of our relationships, we, we focus on business impact. Whether that is cost savings, if it's time savings, cost displacement, travel reduction, those are the type of things that we measure. So the consultant's gonna look at your key performance indicators, integrate that into the way that we measure value, and represent the impact of this solution in terms of things that are important to you. Consultant is something that is part of every relationship and core to the success of really taking advantage of online learning. Next slide, please. So our approach, there's really four steps to the approach. We begin with the engagement piece. Again, we're gonna bring forth the experts, because not every organization knows how to use online learning effectively. So our solution services organization is gonna work with your organization to understand your strategic goals. We've talked about the five Cs. We're gonna take those strategic goals, those business drivers, the milestones that you're trying to achieve, and integrate it into a strategy for leveraging online learning. From the engagement piece, we move to the alignment. That's where we're gonna take our content, your content. We're gonna map that out to job roles, core values. It can be competencies, and then we're gonna develop those curriculum plans. So if you can imagine, I am an administrator, and when I log into the system, I'm gonna have the training that's relevant to my job from a compliance perspective, a professional development perspective, as well as I can use the system for what we call performance support. So for example, performance support. When we talk about alignment, an individual has a need to learn how to make a pivot table. How do I do that quickly? You go into the system, you type in pivot table. You have the option to read a book, look at a three minute video, or actually take a course on creating a pivot table. So it's used as a performance support tool. So instead of doing it the long way, or some folks may refer to it the wrong way, you can learn something in three minutes that saves you an hour or two hours. That's the goal of online learning. That's how we deliver business impact. The last piece is the adoption. We talked about the marketing, excuse me, the third piece is the adoption. We talked about marketing and communication. Again, it's integrated into your, your means of communication, and we're trying to deliver training at the right time to the right people. And lastly, the value. I've mentioned earlier how that consulting's gonna work. We have proven models, and you'll see this when you receive this particular deck. There's some additional information, but there's white papers on how we go about what we call a value impact analysis. There's an entire methodology that we use. We use that with all of our customers, and we walk them through measuring the return on investment they receive from the solution that we bring to the table. Next slide, please. So we've talked about content a lot, so just to put this in perspective, folks, we're not just talking about online courses. We're not talking about two hour courses, two week courses. Most courses are about an hour in length. They're made up of multiple topics, and the topics range about 15 minutes. So we're really taking and trying to find the right content delivered in the shortest amount of time to maximize that impact on the backend. I need to change the way I'm working to be more productive. That's our goal. So you'll find that there are self-paced courses, there are videos, there are digitized books that are fully searchable. So again, if I type in pivot table and I prefer to read a book, it's gonna take you directly to the page in the book where we're talking about what you're searching for. So you just don't have to search and flip through a book. You simply click and go, and that's the opportunity that we have. So there's mentoring. Mentoring, those are subject matter experts that are available online. If you have a question, you merely enter into a chat, ask that person that question, they will respond to you in real time. There are portals, there's practice simulations. All these different types of resources are cataloged under the topics of business skills. Again, those five Cs are what we would focus on. Management and leadership, your compliance, workplace safety, as well as your desktop and IT skills. And if I may say, the IT organizations aren't using this, and we had great feedback from that organization in terms of time and cost savings associated with this. So, the content's at the focus, but it's really the alignment and then delivering this in such a way that it's easy to consume. If we can go to the next slide, please? So you can see here that if we give you the right content, and we provide you with the tools to access the right content when you need it, to save you time and to be more effective at your job, then the level of engagement is gonna be high. By doing that, we're delivering this experience on a PC, we're delivering it on a tablet, as well as on your mobile phone. And by the way, if you start a course on your PC and then you go to a tablet, you can pick up right where you left off on the tablet and finish that course. So, very similar to, I guess, what you're seeing from Verizon and Comcast when you're watching the movie, we can deliver that with training as well. Again, the last piece here is that it's also a wonderful administrative tool, because all activity is tracked. So as you look at mentoring someone, you look at being a manager over a number of people, how do I develop folks, the tools are in place to help you do that. Next slide, please. When we talk about return on investment, these are just a few areas that, as we look across our customers, how we're able to impact their business. Few that might stand out for you. Increased customer service, increased quality of work, reduced travel time, displaced cost, mitigate, mitigate lawsuits, reduce time away from work, as well as retain high potential employees. So these are some of the values. Again, Skillsoft has more than 6,000 customers. We're a global company, the largest online learning provider globally. And this is the output of solutions that we put in place with our customers across the board. Next slide, please. So, we wanted to keep it short. It's been extended evening, so thank you for your attention. If there are any questions, by all means, we're here to answer those questions. Again, there are, there are additional slides that you'll receive in the deck that really detail the solution and the content that's available. Yes, ma'am?
Second question.
Yes, ma'am.
Does this organization have a strategic plan? Is that the?
There is content on strategic planning. Yes, it wouldn't be that we're consulting on strategic, yes, ma'am, but it is foundation for that. Thank you for the opportunity.
All right, we have one question for Dr. Bedden for, about the Skills USA. Hold it, hold it. Skillsoft, hold it, hold it. Come on back and make me a question. Come on back and maybe another question. Okay, Ms. Epps?
Yes, I have several questions, but I think this one question will determine whether or not I need to ask the remaining questions. Is this an opportunity, Dr. Benn, that we are looking to bring online anytime soon?
Our hope, if possible, would be to come live in the fall, and to start the rollout and marketing conversation somewhere late July, early August, if possible. This, again, addresses like, for instance, we have a requirement that there are certain compliance things, that Title IX and those other things, for example, that are supposed to be provided to our employees, well, we don't have a staff capacity of 3,700 employees, but this provides, for example, a platform that allows us to set a requirement for going through training, and even monitor and have a deadline and due date to do things like that. It has also the opportunity, for instance, where we have a lot of our managers talking about, how do I help people get better, or improve their skills as part of improvement process, before we get to that negative conversation. The bigger piece that we went after, and again, Capital One, working as part of Business Advisory, trying to introduce us to possible solutions, was the number of support staff that often talked about, I don't, we do things with teachers, but what do we have to get better? And whether it be our Microsoft Office skills, whether it be our customer service skills, with answering the phone and dealing with difficult people, even our managers talking about crucial conversations, a lot of that exists within this platform.
That leads to just a couple more. First, with this compliance training, the document that was, this information was in our Friday report?
It was, I believe you sent out one of your weekly reports, we'll send it again, the presentation.
Okay, in this week's Friday report, there was a document that looked like it was a draft of a certification sheet where employees, I guess, read the policy and then confirmed that...
Yes, we went through a process where we wanted to highlight some of the key HR policies and procedures to make sure that employees know that they need to read those, those are already aligned.
Okay, would this be redundant, I mean, how...
No.
Would we then have this service and we wouldn't be required to do...
That's just a certification piece, that we have policies that you're supposed to be aware of, that doesn't deal with training.
And compliance, that's not compliance?
But compliance is also that you give them information, also that is beyond that, like, we have rules and policies about sexual harassment, but teaching people to understand what it's like, and certain things that you're supposed to present to them about the law and things like that, this will support some, but it will support, we, it supports more than that.
Okay, it's just that, as I heard the presentation, I started clicking off my mind, we've got some HR function in here, we have some IT department, maybe building and maintenance, would we look at cutting any of staff that we currently, well, let me ask this, do we currently not have the staff that has the capacity to be able to bring this to us?
No, we don't.
And so...
Some of this we do, but it also is a way to, even those people, you can redirect their work sometimes because you can use this, so it's not meant to target cutting people, it may be give you a more efficient and effective way to deliver it, so that your person isn't tied up doing it. We have 2,000 support staff, for example, so, when I want to give training to clerical support, this is, I don't know how to do Excel, we really don't have in the professional development office, a person who is equipped to provide that type of training to all of our staff. Now, it is in addition to whatever we have, and some things it may replace.
Okay, how much would it potentially cost?
It depends on what package we pick and work out with them, you know, the top end could be $150,000 to initially start up, and then I think you have a recurring fee after that, or it could be something lower.
And so, we just had the budget discussion, would we be amending the budget to include this if we were trying to make it happen by...
We're trying to work with some outside partners to see if they would jumpstart it for us.
Okay.
There's one option, and then those are conversations, we don't know, and that's why I said we hope to, but the funding piece, now, the product and the services is no brainer to us, it's the issue of how do we launch it, and the funding mechanism to get it launched.
That's all my questions.
Okay. Thank you very much, thank you all. I'm clear.
The next item is 5.02, receive the 2015 General Assembly summary and the corresponding policies.
Good evening, board members, I'd like to just do a brief overview of the items that you've received, we have board docs, I do believe that there were some copies that were made available here tonight in the hallway regarding your policies, so just a brief overview, if you have questions, I encourage you to, please read all of it, ask me questions between now and the next session, if you can give me any changes, I'll give you the date now, by June the 30th, that gives us a little bit of time before our next meeting, this is considered your first read of the policies, so the idea would be that we come back on the 13th of July, receive it again with any changes that have been made in interim, and you vote on it at that particular time. So, just a brief overview, you have your summary of legislation affecting public education that was approved by the 2015 General Assembly, it's broken down, the summary piece is broken down to correspond to your policy manual, so bylaws, business, personnel, et cetera, and so what we try to do is highlight any policy changes that were affected in that particular area, and then you have a section for just informational, or legislation that would require a regulation change, and so I would bring this not only to the attention of the board, but the administration as well, because while there have been some, while there's some legislation that does not require, that would require policy changes as noted, there are some that are listed here that do not, and for the large part, do not require a policy change, but would require a modification of a practice or a regulation, and we try to highlight the corresponding policies where they're related. So, that's your General Assembly summary, and it looks sort of like this, you have, that's the cover sheet, the first attachment. Your second attachment was the policy revision summary for the General Assembly actions, as I note, as I stated, on your summary, you'll note where, for example, on the business section, there's legislation that now requires the publication of the annual budget and line item form on your website, and so that required a policy change, because you do have a policy that speaks directly to how the budget is presented, and that's, of course, this is all beginning July 1. So, on your policy summary, you will have the summary sheet that has the corresponding policies, and the summary of the specific revisions that are being made to each policy, and behind that, of course, are the policies in red line form, where you would note the changes to that, and so you have, I won't go down the whole list, but there are several new things, I'll bring your attention to a new policy, access to employee social media accounts that was proposed by the legislation, or approved through the legislation, that would prohibit employers from requiring employees to provide usernames, passwords to their social media accounts. Home instruction, there is a new policy that's added here, not that the practice, of course, is new, but we added a policy to specifically speak to home instruction, and that also incorporated changes that were made in the Virginia, the legislation this year for home instruction. Again, encourage you to read through all of those very carefully. So, okay, I'm, I'm, was getting ready to go ahead to the next item, I'm sorry, are there any questions, I guess, for about the first item, the General Assembly updates? Okay, then, okay.
The next item is 5.03, receive revisions to school board policies.
This next item in your, on your board docs packet, as we move through revising the policies based on the General Assembly updates throughout the past year or so, there have been some policies that have come up from time to time through the board or through the administration that we now bring to your attention for, to be addressed as changes to the policy, and again, it follows the same format, the policy revision summary, you have it broken down into three sections, the school board recommendations, the administration recommendations, the other recommendations, and I won't read all of them to you, but there are several new items that are posted here, that are included here, school volunteers, an entire policy dedicated to that, 4.39, a proposed new policy on college and university partnerships, workplace bullying under the administration recommendations is a new policy. And the other policies that are noted here, some have minor changes to them, some have significant changes to them, so I would draw your attention to the change, you know, to make sure that you're reading the revisions and the corresponding pages behind that that have all of the policies, you can just turn to the actual page number and see what the policy is. Yes, Mr. Epps?
I was gonna make sure...
It should be...
It's on the page?
Mm-hmm, it's on board docs.
But was that one of the...
I believe so, yes. The first page of this particular item looks like this, this was one, now, I don't know how it was spread out out there, but one of the attachments says policy provisions, item 5.03. Policy revisions summary, agenda item 5.03, it looks like this, this is what I'm referring to as far as the summary's concerned, the corresponding policies start with school board procedures and standards of conduct, page one. When I come up, I'll make sure you get straight with the order of them. Are there any questions regarding the, this particular item? Okay, I would again encourage you to read through these thoroughly, please give me any questions or comments or concerns by June the 30th, so that we can be prepared to make the revisions for our next read. Thank you.
I'm clear.
Next item is item six, your budgetary item, 6.01, receive the financial statement for the month ending May 2013.
Mr. Chairman, board members, in addition to your monthly report from May, starting on page 22, recap revised projections to year end, we're ending up about where we thought we would earlier in March, April when we presented it, and we're looking now at total revenues of $265.8 million versus expenditures of $265.7, leaving us a balance of about $73,000 at this point. Page 23 will give you the overview showing the differences of revenues and expenditures compared budget to actual, on page 23, at the top half, you can see of our current revised budget, all revenue sources were gonna be short by $859,000, the bulk of that is from the state funds, it's tuition revenues, if we always budgeted, we reduced in next year's budget that $166,000 local funds, and then 744 is primarily BPI money, because we budgeted the full complement, 1,200 kids versus the 882 that we are actually getting funded for this year, so that's, that's the same as it has been all year long, so we're down $859,000 in revenue, but we're also projecting that we'll be under budget and expenditures by $932,000, we're gonna be under in school-based compensation by $2 million, in school other expenditures by $600,000, then we'll be over in the department budgets like transportation, exceptional head and so forth, the same ones that we've been talking about, same council a year, where we're gonna be, that was part of that maintaining existing levels, trying to bump the budget up from the structural deficits we have, that's what that represents for the most part, it'll take us another year out, it looks like FY17 to hopefully address those issues. But anyway, the good news is we're gonna come into the budget, and in the next action section, I ask on the front page at the bottom of the memo, we're asking that you authorize the superintendent to make transfers where needed to balance this budget through the end of the fiscal year, so we can maximize our use of funds. Any questions?
Ms. Epps?
Mr. Westgate, on, I think it's page three of this document, I'm looking at under item number 52, other compensation, and in particular at 521 where it says, and, board member?
Yes, ma'am.
What does the red reflect, that we are, we've overspent?
It's $641,000, I'm sorry, $6,461 over in the board compensation. We gotta include what that is, I'll have to look up, it should be zero, unless you're why, oh, no, I don't recall, so I'll get that and send you an email on it by tomorrow.
Yes, I really would like for you to do that, because I need to raise the issue again, that when I do this comparison of the board's financials, these numbers are off, they have continued to be off, and I'm thinking, I know for me, before I can approve what I think is balanced budget, I need to understand why these numbers keep changing.
Well, I can assure you that the numbers on this, these pages right here, as they're summarized, these are accurate.
On which pages? On this?
Yes, ma'am. All of these pages, these are...
Are you talking about your individual...
Individual...
Well, I'm talking about my individual, definitely, but I'm talking about the fact that I just asked a question about this $6,461 that's in the red.
That's a compensation account, that's board member wages, that's not your discretionary funds, so that's something that's got charged on the salary line, and we changed the budget codes this year for non-contract salaries, and the board got compensation moved to that area, and there could have been another charge from previously, that account was used for a different account, and it could be, we've got to reclass an expense out of there to a different account, like I said, I'll have a specific answer for you on that by tomorrow.
Okay, well, and I appreciate that these are wages and the other one is our expenditures, but both of these numbers concern me, and Mr. Coleman, I really, really mustn't suggest that we have this fixed sooner than later.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Epps, and I will, the clerk and Mr. Westgate's office have been working on this, so, and, okay.
The report, let me flip to the specific page, excuse me. On page 26 of the document, next to the last page, the year-to-date expenditures that are reflected on this report are as of May 31st, there's a year-to-date column that shows you what you had actually spent as of May 31st, it does not reflect encumbrances, I believe one of you might have had a purchase order outstanding, but the balance that is reflected there was your, those are your year-to-date expenditures as of May 31st. Correct, if you've ever seen...
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, this is my fault, okay, what we are, what you, what we need to do is for us to sit down with Ms. Epps and clarify this offline, okay, we'll do that, Ms. Epps, okay, whoever else wants to come and get it, get the understanding, we'll set up a time and do it offline, okay, thank you.
The next item is 7.02, receive reaction meal, tuition, and rentory.
Good evening, annually you are provided with tuition...
Annually, you are provided with tuition, meal and building rental rates for adoption and approval. I worked in cooperation with Mr. Krantz's office to determine the rates for the 1516 school year. Those were posted to Board Docs. You have tuition rates, regular school tuition, which is a product of your local appropriation, divided by your projected average daily membership. Your exceptional education tuition, which are your projected special education expenditures, divided by your December 1 child count. The vocational school rates, we are still working with our Office of Career and Technical Education to determine the appropriate rates to charge for 2015-16. So those will be provided to you in July. The meal rates are presented there. Again, there is no charge under the community eligibility provision. The second meal charges are reflected in the notice section. The building rental fees, again, are determined by utility costs and anticipated wages for individuals that work during building rentals. Your athletic field rentals are, again, are provided and again, are based on your custodial and security rates. If you have questions, I'm more than happy to answer those. Need a motion or just for review? For action? I move that we accept the rental fees as presented.
Moved in second, I'm clear.
The motion was made by Ms. Gray, seconded by Mr. Sternberg to approve the meal tuition and rent rates, starting with the R.A.S. center. Mr. Sternberg?
Yeah.
Ms. Gray? Yes, Mr. Boomer. Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Harris-Kamal?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Pinky S?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Motion passes nine zero. The next item is 7.03, receive for action facilities task force recommendations.
Mr. Coleman, we'll do a quick PowerPoint for this, for the side.
Mr. Coleman, I move to dispatch a constitutional presentation PowerPoint. Mr. Krantz, are we seeing this?
Yeah, well, we'll go to the very, how about if we just go out to like the fourth, the last slide? How about that?
I guess Mr. Krantz's night is not.
Can you bring your copy of the Bible, please? Okay. So if you recall, with facilities task force, there was five options that the facilities task force came up with. Option number one said, do nothing. That's not really a viable option because under that option, it doesn't address the declining, the deteriorating buildings. And it doesn't address the growth issue that's taking place inside the district. Option number two said, let's just, let's just fix the problem by rezoning. There's no way to rezone out of the growth issue that's getting ready to take place inside this district, particularly in the southern end of our district. We will be putting on September 8th, 11 portables at Green and 12 portables in the front of Broad Rock. Plus, both schools, because they do not have sufficient dining room space today, we will be putting a portable dining room at both of those locations. And that work, the city's planning commission approved the plan this afternoon. So you'll be seeing dirt turn there within the next 24 to 48 hours. Option number three said, really option one, but let's equalize. And that option was $645 million. The problem is, it didn't address the growth that's getting ready to take place inside the district. So that would have been on top of the equalization component. Option number four said, let's go and just get rid of our empty seats. Okay? Problem with that particular option is where the empty seats are are not where the students are. So where our growth is in the south of Green, Broad Rock, El Part, Bushaw, Whip, there's no place for me to move those students to from a rezoning perspective. Now, four does get rid of seats and that'll generate some efficiencies. But it still doesn't address two critical things. One, a portfolio that's continuing to get old, remember, two-thirds of our building are over 50 years old today. It doesn't address that. It doesn't address the capacity issue, should we still be bringing portables in? That's not really the best option going forward. The option we believe, and the task force believed was the best one, was option number five, which is a combination of all the tools that you had at your disposal, which consists of one, rezoning. And there are issues we're dealing with today that could be solved with rezoning. Number two, it brings up the elimination of space by doing modernization through renovations and additions. One of the recommendations in option five on the south end was to add, renovate an existing school, add classrooms at a particular school, which would allow another school to either be closed or give the option to become the pre-taker. Remember, 49, there's 49 classes today that are pre-taken. Now, they don't solve all of our problems, but what they do give us the ability to do is add some additional students and help mitigate the need for as many portables as we have. The other thing that this particular plan does is new construction. And that construction allows us to start closing schools, eliminating empty seats, going to bigger schools and getting that equalization to take place. That's what option four, five does, is a combination of everything. If you turn it. And y'all seen all this? You seen this slide, but under option number five, under phase one, which is the first five years, we would close a total of six schools, open three new ones, and one school would be renovated with an addition. So the net closure rate there is three. In phase two, we also with the net closure of three. Phase three is one, and in total, over the course of 15 years, is a net closing of 14 schools, building of seven new ones, two renovations slash additions, so a net change of seven schools. The next slide, the cost of doing that, in fiscal year 16, the city gave the school system $18.3 million for school construction. The plan that we've outlined spends $16.7 million of that money. That covers the cost of doing the design of the new elementary school, the design of the new middle school, as well as doing the renovation slash addition on an existing school. So it accomplishes every single tool that's in the toolbox and it addresses the issues south of the river. Okay? If the board, if action's not taken, that, and we do not begin the design work, and we subsequently don't get the funds from a capital standpoint, starting July 1st of 2016, then Green gets delayed at least 12 months and the new middle school will get delayed at least 12 months. That means that that ball field in front of Broad Rock will go away. Because we'll have portables there and I'll have stormwater running. That means that there'll be portables at Thompson Middle School. And we're not designed for portables at Thompson Middle School. And we'll have a portable dining room because the dining room we have cannot accommodate more than what we're going to be bringing in on day one. And the growth of El Part takes off in three years. So here's a recap of the dollars by year. If you go to the next slide, you can see the total dollars on today's dollars of $563.3 million. Phase one's $168, phase two, phase three. The recommendation, next slide, please, is to approve theoretically option number five, specifically the construction of the new elementary school, the construction, the design and potentially construction of the new middle school, to begin work on the rezoning so that we can eliminate portables and to work on the renovation slash addition, which will address all the problems south of the river. Accomplishes through community meetings, we need to get the community input to start rolling out schools. Start those in September when the school year starts. The plan is to do two meetings per district with at least four meetings being held on Saturday so everybody will have an opportunity to hear the information. Come back to the school board with any tweaks February of 16th and then finalize that plan for March of '16, which then ties also with our budget and our capital plans going into FY17.
Mr. Coleman?
My name is Mr. Boomer. Good evening, Mr. Krantz.
Good evening, Mr. Boomer.
I just had, I just wanted to clarify, you talked about the FY16 capital appropriation that's been made, the 17?
$18.3 million.
$18.3, 16, and that's for design work at, for the elementary, middle?
And do the renovation slash addition at a school that's in the south that allow us to do it potentially?
Is that the design, is the design work specifically for the elementary school? I don't know whether they did it for the middle school as well. We own the A&amp;E for the two new elementary schools?
Correct.
Is that, is that, when you say engineering or design, is that, is that like sort of site fitting or?
Correct.
Fitting one of those, okay. And do we, same thing for the middle school?
That's correct. And we believe that there'll be some significant dollars left over that, that we'll come back to y'all as a board. There's a strong possibility that we can begin doing some work at both sites in FY16. But that would, you know, we would be limited to just get to a certain point and then we'd have to stop. But we believe on a very preliminary basis that we could show the public that we'd be much further along come July 1 of '16 than what people can anticipate today.
And phasing for all this, for option five or whichever option we ultimately decide to approve?
Yes, sir.
That's been determined already, is that right?
Well, we've done it, on option number five, I phased it where inside the first five years, I've done the, the issue south of the river, that's the biggest priority. And that's what's the first three years, that first five years. In the latter part of that first five years, I get into some of the neighborhoods where we consolidate schools and we begin to help revitalize those neighborhoods. The thing that's, that, where there's some leeway there is the timing of, of a new high school. There's, there's the real possibility that George Whip is going to take off. And George Whip's an extremely old building. Between George Whip and Armstrong, we have two buildings where the mechanical systems are on their last legs. If we were to lose either one of those two systems, we couldn't bring them back up. And so that will present some significant operational and academic challenges if that were to occur. And that would fill off this plan, but right now, I've got the new high school in phase three. And phase two kind of addresses the consolidations and elimination of seats on the northern end of the district than on the southern.
And final question, and maybe this is a different discussion that I can have offline, but as we think about facilities and sort of renovating, one of the things that strikes me as odd and probably not the most academically proficient or effective setting is a school like Henderson or Reece Shepherd, where there, I think there's one in.
Francis.
Francis, not Walls.
Correct.
And I'd love to, maybe not tonight because it's facilities task force, but figure out if we've got a plan to maybe put Walls or what, how we.
We do that in, Francis is in phase one, that's part of the dressing. With phase one, it addresses south of the river, it addresses Westover, it addresses Swansboro, it addresses Blackwell, it addresses Oak Grove, it addresses Broad Rock, it addresses Green, it addresses Francis, it addresses Red, Reed, Miles Jones, Red, it addresses both El Part, Thompson and Bushaw. Those are all addressed in phase one. But you're, you're correct in that, and that's the challenge on the timing. But Henderson, for example, is 189,000 square feet expected. To renovate Henderson is about $34 million. So it becomes, you know, it's a timing issue. Henderson's our fourth largest building in our portfolio today. The challenge with Henderson is how do we get, that building right now from an occupancy standpoint is at 50%. And we need to find a way to better utilize that particular asset. And I think it is building Walls would be a significant contributor toward that.
All right, Ms. Taylor, motion. Ms. Taylor?
Hello.
Good morning, David.
My question is, in regard to the proposed renovations and additions over at Westover Hills, is that a result of a possibility of the alterations previously mentioned to take place over at Swansboro? In other words, is Swansboro coming offline as we know it? And that's the justification for making the renovations and additions to Westover Hills?
No, ma'am, Westover Hills, its enrollment is skyrocketing. Westover's is strong, I mean, at some point, and you've heard me say this, the district can stay with small buildings. But you look at our enrollment, and I'm just going to stay south of the river. Blackwell's 411 students on October 3rd, over the next 10 years, it drops well below 375 students. Swansboro's about 298 students and it begins to drop well below 260 students in 10 years. And so it becomes difficult for those buildings to, to pay for themselves. The other thing is that both of those buildings are very particularly sponsored, are open. And the renovation costs are going to be extreme. So it's weird, you know, where do you as a board want to spend your capital dollars? I can do it from a facility standpoint, I can do it either way. But our, our needs from a capital standpoint are going to continue to exceed what we, you know, the dollar amount, the needs are going to exceed. the dollar amount, the needs are gonna exceed the dollar amounts available to afford. Fisher and Southampton are both projected to be flat. And so in that scenario, if, if, if we don't consolidate, say, a Westover and a Swansboro, for example, or do some kind of rezoning and utilize those empty seats that both Swansboro and Blackwell have, then our operating costs are gonna continue to be high. And it's just gonna put pressure on you as a board, you know, on those limited dollars, you know, in finance, and how do you balance out the budget? You know, from my standpoint, I can do it either way.
Okay, so if we keep Swansboro ultimately as it is, and make additions at Westover, then the growth would justify those additions?
Yes, that plus, one of the challenges that both Westover and Reed, for example, have, is that neither was designed for the amount of enrollment there. The parent drop-offs, the bus loop, the parking area. At both of those schools, we're lucky every day that we don't have a major disaster just inside our parking lots. And it's gonna continue to be a major problem, for example, of those two schools. So when I say renovations, there's also some modifications we need to make to campuses so that we can accommodate the population that's going into those buildings.
Okay, and lastly, I guess my only concern as far as Swansboro is concerned is that that's a residential area that's mostly almost all homes. A lot of the homes in that area are rental homes, so it's kind of, I would think, hard to project what the residents, the new renters will look like as far as population and growth. But after thinking about it for quite a while, I'm concerned about moving students out of that environment because there is the swimming pool that's on site there. And I'm just wondering, would it be feasible to transport students from other schools as we're trying to develop a stronger relationship with parks and recreation, to give students more access to the pool in particular?
The challenge...
Is it more expensive to transport them from other locations where they could be right there on site?
The challenge is, is that where Swansboro's located at, if we took Broad Rock, for example, those students now are gonna go through the Green zone, the Oak Grove zone, to get to Swansboro. Green would go through Reed as well as, well, they go through Reed to get to, part of Oak Grove, to get to Swansboro. So what ends up happening is that's where the growth is. The growth's sitting here at Green, the growth's sitting here at Broad Rock, the growth is sitting here at Francis, the growth is sitting over here in Reed. That if we rezon and bring them, say, to Swansboro, or we try to bring them to a Blackwell, or we try to bring them up to Fisher and Southampton, we're gonna be going through multiple school zones to get those students from point to point. And I think you would see a significant, from the public backlash as to why my student, if I live by Francis, why am I now getting picked up and moved, you see what I'm saying, across two and three zones? When, you know, there's capacity. The other thing that, and, and, you know, this is a difficult decision for y'all's board, is that when you, when you start, having done this with two other districts, when you start picking and choosing the schools, at that point, nothing's gonna get done. We've done, you know, we've done a nice academic exercise with the report. But I mean, every school has something. That's why from the task force, when we've gone through this, I've stated and I'll continue to state it, we looked at the data and the data of, you know, I'm fortunate not being from Richmond in this exercise and that I don't have that history and I don't have an opinion, you know, and that's no disrespect to everybody, and that was it. And I understand if that's the choice that you as a board want to do, and we'll implement it and execute it to the best of our ability. But I think if you start taking out one, you end up taking out all, is what you're doing.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Travis?
Mr. Westbay, you just kind of touched on where my question was going. You talked about picking and choosing the schools. Is it your understanding that we're gonna vote on this without knowing? For instance, if we go with option 5, where you're consolidating four middle schools into two new middle schools? And I apologize if you've already given this information, it was a meeting I did not attend, but...
Option 5 tonight would be that, that's our framework. All that we've got, the authority right now from a monetary standpoint, you can approve all of option 5 tonight. Option 5 can't be done.
Okay.
You can approve all of Phase 1 tonight, it can't be done.
Okay.
There's eighteen point three million dollars that's in the school construction account. A new elementary school is $35 million. A new middle school is $50 million. So tonight, all we can do is begin design work on an elementary and a middle, and that's it. Now, we could, if you agree with option 5, where we look at some elimination of seats and consolidation between Westover and Swansboro, we look at rezoning, as we talked about previously, for Broad Rock between Oak Grove and Blackwell, we look at the construction of the new Green and then rezon once it's built between Francis, Reed, Miles Jones, Reed, to kind of reshuffle the deck. And we do the new middle school where, once that's done, there's a rezoning of Thompson, part of Thompson potentially to Brown, and then Thompson and Bouchal splits their deck to better match where the students are and where the schools are located.
Okay, so if I can piggyback off of that, where you're talking about rezoning Thompson to Brown, let me just cut to the chase. Does it seem to make sense that we are combining Elkhart and Thompson with the outcome ultimately being that we're permanently naming this school right now because the intent is that Thompson is gonna stay intact after the three years, although you say it can't accommodate?
But my recommendation to the board is that where the growth's occurring and where the students are located, that if a new middle school is built, that I would recommend that Thompson be closed, that match those students that live in the northeast, the northwest portion of the southern portion of our district, so they're closer to Brown than bringing them all the way down to the new middle school. That we then take the remainder of the existing Thompson district, plus the existing Elkhart district and the existing Bouchal district, and reshuffle that debt so that on the new middle school being a 1,500 student school, that would be its functional max, that we should reshuffle the debt to better meet, match the students and where the assets are located at. So we start minimizing driving time, transportation costs, and we truly create, try to start tying into community schools.
Okay, let me just go a little bit further and I'm finished. How much time do I have?
I mean, yes.
All right.
Where would you recommend that we in fact build this new middle school?
At Elkhart. I would recommend building the new middle school tonight at Elkhart because at that particular site, we have 16 acres of land. We could begin construction immediately. And the recommendation on the elementary school would be at Green. And I could, I could construct the new elementary while Green's in school.
Okay, okay. So could we use, what are you asking us tonight? Maybe we gotta help.
What I'm asking is that, conceptually, the board adopt option 5. And, and, and look, whatever option you adopt, that plan's gonna change, it's a living document, okay? Whatever you vote tonight, if, if come November 1st, we lose a mechanical at George Whip High School, it changes everything. It changes everything. If we lose that mechanical at Armstrong, it changes everything. So that's why I'm saying, it's not, just because there's, there's a plan that's on a piece of paper tonight, that document's gonna change as the needs of the district change. So what I'm asking is that you approve option 5 as a plan, understanding that it's gonna continue to be modified with a specific authorization that we can perceive with the design work on the elementary, the design work on the middle, the, the design work on the addition and renovation, and that we begin the community meetings, which will get a lot of input about all of the proposed changes south of the river.
Okay. I'm not finished, I'm still not finished. And I promise this is my last one, but can we potentially go ahead and use some of this design money now? We're going to build a middle school to demolish Elkhart as it stands because we're not going back there?
My, my belief is there'll be about $3 million, $3 to $4 million left over when we finish what I've described here tonight. And if that's the case, I will be coming back to y'all's board with requesting that we demolish Elkhart as well as begin site working for it.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Larson?
Thank you, Mr. Krantz. I think I've heard this presentation like 15 times now. But, and I think that saying that we're gonna approve the concept is really important, but I also think that the community meetings and that whole process, which based on the last slide, most of those will take place in the fall, is a really important piece in all of this. So tonight, we approve a concept, and then we go out to the community and say, this is what we're thinking, we get the feedback, and we tweak it as we continue to get that feedback. Is that...
Right, but we're moving forward on our design on...
With the south side.
On preschools, yes, ma'am. Correct.
Which we had already previously talked about as a board.
Right, but I don't know if we had formally, and so what this would do is when we go out to the community, we have one option, we're not talking to the community about all, about all the maps and everything else. We're zeroing in on option number 5.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Dr. Jones?
Just quickly, Mr. Krantz, I just want to make sure I understood you correctly. Your recommendation is the best place to put this new middle school is where growth is?
Correct.
And the growth, in your estimation, is...
The growth is actually a little bit north of where Elkhart site is, but...
But it's not, it's not at the existing Thompson site?
No, the growth, the growth is in that Elkhart, Bouchal.
Correct.
Kind of towards Swansboro, you know, she drew a triangle about, you know, we're making, that's about where the growth is occurring.
Sure, that's what I...
Yes, ma'am.
Hey, is there a motion?
Second.
You gotta say the motion.
I'm moved that we accept the recommendation of Mr. Krantz to receive option 5.
Okay. Motion was made by Ms. Harris Mohammed, seconded by Ms. Taylor, to approve the facilities task force recommendation for option 5?
Yes.
Mr. Sternovitz?
No.
Ms. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Bourne?
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Harris Mohammed?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Pinkneabs?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Motion passes as eight.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
The next item is 7.04, proceed for action budget transfers. We have several budget transfers requiring action this evening. You receive these items on board docs, I'd be happy to discuss any specifics if you have questions.
Are there any questions on the budget transfers? Questions? Motion? Okay, Ms. Gray?
I just have one comment, and that's when the, I know you all know what those line items represent, but when we're looking at those transfers, to have the...
Description.
Description would be more helpful.
Right.
We are trying to add those, if we receive them and they don't have a description of right here, then we do put the description on.
Okay.
So we will, we will be more diligent in that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I agree with the approval of the budget transfer request, Ms. Taylor. Is there a second?
Next.
Second.
Motion was made by Mr. Bourne, seconded by Mrs. Larson, to approve the budget transfers. Mr. Sternovitz?
Yes.
Ms. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Bourne?
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Harris Mohammed?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Pinkneabs?
No.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Motion passes as seven two. The next item is 7.05, proceed for action.
Earlier in the night when Mr. Westbay was in front of us, I think he had asked her approval, did that...
Now we have some other items.
Okay.
Some more items, some more items, yeah, some more. Okay.
7.05, Mr. Recieve for action human resources actions.
Mr. Coleman, since we have closed, I'd like to discuss the indemnity enclosed.
Okay, all right, you can make your presentation.
Okay, the human resources actions for approval tonight include the nomination of 29 employees, the change of contract of 31 employees, the transfer of 14 employees, and the rescission of resignation of one employee. HR actions for information include the resignation of 49 employees, the retirement of eight employees, the change of name of one employee, the non-renewal of one employee, and a position ending of two employees. In addition, what you also received that came in after the agenda had been sent to you all was the nomination of two additional employees, the change of contract of one employee, as well as the resignation of eight additional employees.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Nelson.
I do have a quick question.
Okay, follow me?
Yes.
Okay.
Can we make certain that when staff receive their contracts that they receive the salary schedule that's updated on the website? And also, I understand that the superintendent sent out an explanation as to why the change of contracts. But we need to make certain that those two things are sent out moving forward in a timely fashion with contracts.
The salary schedule?
Whatever the salary schedule, step schedule, salary, whatever it is, we have the old one on the website, we need the new one on the website. Whatever's been updated, revised, changed. If it hasn't been changed, that's fine. In addition to that, the reason why we've received so many emails over the weekend is because teachers did not understand the format of their contract, and then some supplemental stuff. So they didn't know that was coming down the pipe. They might have, from my understanding from the email, they were not aware. The superintendent sent out something because it was a request. That went out, but our employees need to have those things attached to their contract, and that would eliminate some of the confusion, maybe not all of the confusion, but some of the confusion. That's what I'm asking as a board member, that we do in the, in the future, moving forward. Because we can't go back now, but we need to make sure that happens in the future.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nelson.
The next item is 7.06, to approve proposed position changes in the Transportation Department, and approval to pay the exceptional education bus drivers an additional 30 cents per hour only for their time driving exceptional education students.
Thank you. The Transportation Department back in 2012, when the last major budget cuts were done, made some decisions with positions... budget cuts were done, um, made some decisions with positions that, uh, for example, a bus driver's position, um, was actually not performing a bus driver, they were performing another function, and they were receiving a supplement in addition to cover them for for what they were doing. Um, we're trying to eliminate that, and so there's three positions inside transportation that currently receive supplements that we're proposing to eliminate those three positions. The positions that they're doing, the functions they're doing are critical to the success of transportation and running a safe and efficient operation. So in order to fund the positions we need, we're proposing to eliminate the three, take those dollars, buy the position, as well as an existing position that's vacant and individual retires this year, and there's another position that has an individual in it that we would eliminate, that would then provide the funds to do two things, fund the three positions that we think are are, uh, more critical in order to achieve a safe and efficient operation. And then number two, our special education drivers face some unique challenges each and every day, both from our students as well as from parents. Um, we want to encourage them, our best and brightest drivers, to be the ones driving them. So we wanna give them a premium for when they drive the exceptional aid bus only. So they have their base, you know, it's in the salary book, plus thirty cents. Now, when they drive a bus for a field trip, it's a regular field trip, they would only be paid their base, they wouldn't get the premium. The premium's only applicable when they do their exceptional aid.
So those positions that we are, that you are asking us to support you on, where they, are they gonna lose their jobs?
One would, the three will have to interview, um, because those would be three new positions, potentially they could, um, but that's the only way we're gonna get, start getting the transportation budget, you know, cleaned up and eliminate these supplements that we had.
So this, you have drivers that are receiving supplements, and they're in a role, but the supplements, this is what I heard.
Yes, ma'am.
The supplements do not coincide with what they're doing. Is that what I heard?
I've got, I've got a driver and two monitors-
Okay.
That currently are in positions that are not driver and monitor. So they're getting their pay plus a supplement, which is equal to five percent.
Okay.
They're performing functions out, totally outside of a monitor that are driver, and I'm trying to eliminate the supplement. And so one course of action was let these three go to back to be the driver and monitor. They haven't done that since two thousand and twelve. The positions they're filling within transportation are critical, okay, for what they do, then it became, how do I pay for it? Well, the first thing is, I have a management position that's vacant from a retirement. We can eliminate that position very easily.
Eliminate the manager position?
Correct.
Why would we wanna do that?
Because it never should have been, that position's not needed in a transportation department.
Okay, manager position not needed, okay.
Correct. We then have the three positions that they're in, take those dollars and bring them in the pot to fund the three. And then, um, there's, in one of the departments, which I'd rather discuss more in close than in in open, um, there's a position there that, you know, if there was unlimited funds, we probably wouldn't be having this conversation, but our budget is limited.
Okay.
And so, um, it's not mission critical, and so we recommended the elimination of that particular position. And that's the one of, while the three could lose their jobs, that one would be the one that would, uh, that would be a reduction.
Okay.
All right. Hey.
If no one else has questions, I'd like to put forward a motion to approve the staffing changes within the transportation department. Second.
The motion was made by Ms. Gray, seconded by Ms. Taylor to approve the proposed changes, proposed position changes in the transportation department, and approve to pay exceptional education bus drivers an additional thirty cents per hour only for their time driving exceptional education students.
Mr. Sternovitz?
Yes.
Ms. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Born?
No.
Mrs. Taylor?
No.
I'm sorry.
No.
Mrs. Harris Mohammed?
No.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Pinkneads?
No.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Motion passes six three. The next item is to approve the request for the superintendent to transfer funds as needed to close the fiscal year successfully with that budget. So moved.
Second.
The motion was made by Ms. Harris Mohammed, seconded by Mr. Sternovitz. Mr. Sternovitz?
Yes.
Ms. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Born?
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor?
No.
Mrs. Harris Mohammed?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Pinkneads?
No.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Motion passes seven two. Mr. Coleman? All right. See you at nine, nine o'clock. The next item on the agenda is, um, new business.
Okay. All right. See you at nine, nine o'clock.
The next item is, you close session.
I'm showing to the personnel exemption, two point two thirty-seven, eleven eighty-one, and legal exemption at two point two thirty-seven, eleven eighty-seven of the Code of Virginia under the School Board of City of Richmond, convening closed session, says, action employee matter fourteen fifteen thirty-three, investigative findings in employee matter fourteen fifteen thirty-four, evaluation of specific employees of the public body, says assignment and appointment employee matter fourteen fifteen twenty-five, fourteen fifteen twenty-six, and of specific employees of public body pursuant to human resources action. Discuss the rescission of employment in employee matter fourteen fifteen thirty-five, and consultation with legal counsel regarding specifically legal matters concerning a contractual matter.
Second. The motion was made by Mr. Born, seconded by Ms. Gray, they're going to close, all in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? You're now in close.